Good evening, and welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Gostown Zoning Board of Adjustments. My name is Kathy Hooton, and I am the chairman of the zoning board. The Gostown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and four alternates.
Five.
Five? Five alternates.
I believe.
If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board of adjustments, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, the abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at the town hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the zoning board of adjustments tonight, you have the right to appeal to Superior Court. However, before appealing to Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision, and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. With that, I would like the board members and staff to introduce themselves. Al?
Alan Gaetan, alternate.
Lynn Stewart, vice chairman.
Galabre.
Joe Thamino, alternate.
And Brian Rose, planning and zoning administrator. And just for the record, you asked me that question about if there were four or five. There are four.
So there is still one available alternate position for anybody who is interested to become a member of the zoning board of adjustments. Thank you very much. That being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October meeting.
Are you and I the only ones here?
I think so. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye. I need to say aye. Did anybody read the minutes?
No.
No?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstentions can count. As long as you have a positive vote with abstentions, then you're okay.
Abstain because I was in prison.
Aye, aye. We have two ayes to the abstention the motion carries. The minutes are approved. First of all, I would just like to make a notice to all of you that are here. We have been asked to continue two of the applications this evening. So if anybody is here for the Bel Air application, there is a request for a continuance. That's the first one that we are going to decide whether to continue or not. The other one is the Grover application on Durango Drive. If there is anybody here that is interested in that application, they've requested that to be continued also.
Madam Chair, if I can just make a quick correction on that, they've actually requested for a withdrawal.
A complete withdrawal.
Grover application is a withdrawal, yes.
So if there is anybody here from the Grover application that has been withdrawn and will not be heard. Okay, that being said, Bel Air Associates, applicants, owners are seeking a variance to erect an internal illuminated LED message center sign at Bel Air Nursing Home property to replace their two existing signs. The variance is needed because the proposed sign is located as close as 60 feet to the front property line of the abutting lots in Residential 1 District that are across the street and as close as 90 feet to a lot in the Residential 1 District that abuts this property to the west, whereas Section 663 requires that internally illuminated signs within 250 feet of a residential R1 or R2 district boundary only be illuminated by a shielded externally white light. No internal illumination is permitted. The property is located on 29th Center Street, MAP 28, Lot 17, in the Commercial District. This has been continued from October 1st, 2013 meeting. Again, we have received a request from them. William Amen Esquire requesting a continuance from the November 5th, 2013 ZBA hearing until the December 3rd, 2013. He was scheduled on a business trip the week of November 4th. He said despite his best efforts, he was unable to reschedule it, and therefore has requested once again a continuance of the meeting. Is there any comment or discussion regarding that continuance? Yes, no?
It was continued from the past month at their request also.
Yes.
To this date.
Yes, it was, and let me explain to you about last month's situation. Last month, when they asked for the continuance, at that time, we only had three members present.
Correct.
So they did not want to go forward because there wasn't a full five-member board.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. There also have been continuances prior to last meeting. This application was first submitted-
June 5th, 2013.
June 5th, and this has been now enacted November 5th, 2013.
This is the second continuance that the applicant's request, I believe, continued from September to October.
I don't recall all the different continuances. I know they came for the first one, and the board asked for additional information. After that, they came with additional information, but it was only like the day, or actually, no. They asked for a continuance in between there, and the board granted it to them. And then, two months from there, they came and they submitted their application like the day before, and the board needed more time to review, and so the board continued it. Then they got to the next meeting, and that was the last meeting where they asked for a continuance based on the fact that there was a three, only a three-member board. And now they're here requesting another continuance, so it's-
What has been suggested is that we consider allowing the continuance, however, with the condition that they re-notify the abutters again because of the amount of time that has passed since the original application and the amount of continuances that have been requested. So I'm just putting that out there for your consideration.
I'll make that motion, that we continue with the condition that they re-notice their abutters.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to allow the continuance with the condition that the abutters be re-notified.
Specify the date on the motion. I don't recall.
December 3rd is the-
Is that the next meeting?
Yes, December 3rd is the next meeting. To be included in the motion, okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There being none, the motion carries 5-0-0. And just to backtrack a little bit, Al's an alternate, Joe's an alternate. They are acting as full members this evening in lieu of the other members not being here. So, all right, we will now go on to the second application. You will be notified, you will be now notified in the mail of any continuance, and I think that we-
How many do we allow before we stop?
We're getting there. We're getting there. I know, and I will just say that I think that in the beginning, when you were here, we did suggest that maybe you call before each meeting, and unfortunately, we just received a notification for the continuance, and, but now you will be officially notified in the mail.
Because they seem to notify you like the day of.
Something's happened. Just give us a call, that's all I can suggest. Thank you, thanks for coming. The next application is Howard and Teresa Leonard. Owners, applicants are seeking a variance to enclose an existing deck that is currently 20 feet from the front property line, whereas Section 4.3 of the Gostown zoning ordinance requires a setback of 35 feet from the front property line. The property is located on 163 Mountain Base Road, MAP 41, Lot 73, in the agricultural zone. This has been continued from the October 1st, 2013 meeting. Is either Howard or Teresa Leonard here, or is somebody here representing them? If you're here, would you please step forward? While you're stepping forward, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding regional impact.
Al move it has no regional impact.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, that there's no regional impact. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, there's no regional impact. Well, look who's here with us this evening. Is this Howard and Teresa?
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board. Would you please explain to us what you are planning on doing, and what you would like to do, and-
We have a small enclosed porch which we want to extend in the front. And the porch we have, the deck is 30 feet up in the air for the house. So what we wanted to do was make another 25 feet, 30 feet enclosed area.
Are you enclosing the existing deck?
Yes.
Are you expanding that deck out further?
No, not further towards the driveway. It goes this way along the house.
When you built the deck?
Mm-hmm.
When did you build the deck?
50 years ago.
Okay, so it was before the zoning ordinances, and that's why you didn't have to come before the zoning board for, so you're being in the setback is almost grandfathered because you put it there 50 years ago.
Yep.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions?
I have no questions.
The only, if I may, the only modification you're talking about, you're not changing the footprint of what's there at all?
Nothing from the ground.
Like a screen structure on top of it essentially, or an enclosure?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I can keep my husband down that end.
Do you need to sit in this chair instead? Oh, boy.
It's kind, the one we have already enclosed is kind of narrow, you know, and it would be nice to have a couple more seats out there, so when someone comes. I enjoy the outside, so that's where I sit most of the day.
To visualize it, maybe I'd be speaking too much, but to visualize it, the building itself faces the lake, and it's set back quite a bit in, and we're pretty much landlocked by conservation. And as you visualize the, what we call the, well, I call the front of the building that faces the lake, the porch that we have, the existing porch is on the right-hand side. That is our entrance to the kitchen and so forth and so on from the porch down in there. I think Brian has, yeah, he's got a picture of it there. We just want to extend that side porch onto the deck area, and that's all enclosed.
In your packet, there's a drawing that looks like this.
Yeah.
This kind of explains the location of, the portion of the deck that they're talking about.
I think you have a picture of it.
There is one in there, I believe.
So basically, you're grandfathered for the deck, but because you're doing something differently to the deck, you now fall into the current zoning ordinances, which now say that-
I guess.
It's going to be in the setback area, so that's why you're here right now.
Yes. Instead of a 20-foot to the front line, property line, you now say 35 feet, so.
Yeah.
Grandfathered, yes.
Yes.
I don't know, do you have this picture?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so that's facing the driveway, and there's 300 feet to the road.
Good.
Essentially, you're trying to turn that porch into like a three-season room, almost enclosing it with screens.
Pretty much, yeah. We have an electric heater on the one we have now. Very seasonable.
Yes, Al?
This, I'll call it a paper road, or is it a paper road in front of it?
Yes.
And it's a driveway?
No more, it's a driveway. There's no more paper road.
That's a driveway to your home, but it's not an improved road.
No.
Correct.
It's dirt.
I'm former chairman of the Paper Roads.
Ah, I'm going to write your name down. There's been a lot of talk about those.
Conservation Commission and I did a lot of work on that.
So across the, across the street to the off-
Our woods.
Our woods, but is that conservation property?
Yes.
So directly across the street is conservation land never to be built on, I would assume. Okay.
Yeah, but we're now building on conservation.
I understand that, but the other side of the driveway is conservation, and it is preserved, okay.
Okay, well, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we thank both of you. I'm going to ask if there's any other interested parties or abutters here, and if there are any issues, we'll ask you to come up and address them again. Okay? So you were the Paper Road person.
That was quite a project that we had, that Paper Roads, doing away with a lot of that headache that we had way back when.
I don't think the headache's gone away that soon.
But when you think about it, there is a paper road in front of the street. Before you get to the conservation land shown here, I've seen instances before where it's been divided back to the abutting properties, and if you did that, you'd be inconformant.
Well, the ruling on the Paper Roads, if we did away with that, the adjacent landowners share the property under the road.
Correct.
And it goes back to whomever. And we have a right-of-way from Mountain Base Road into our property, and then I have a, if I'm looking with my back towards the house, a right-hand turn, it's like an inverted L that's part of the driveway. It used to be, many, many years ago, I've been up there like 45 years or so, and it's been, in the beginning, I think the first few years, it was an access to somebody that had a camp further down towards Wallace Road than I am. And then they did away with, they stopped coming. They did away with it, they didn't use it. So we did away with technically that road, and that was part of what we did with the commission of the Paper Roads.
We certainly thank you for the service of the town.
Thank you.
All right, so moving along, I'm going to ask you to go back into the audience and see if there's anybody else here who would like to speak about your application. Kathy, we're on the Leonard application.
Okay.
Bel Air has been continued, and it was continued with the condition that the abutters would be re-noticed. Okay, moving along, is there anybody here that isn't a butter that would like to speak regarding the Leonard's application? Any interested parties? Any opponents? Well, there's none. So there being none, is there any, they left. Is there any questions that anybody else would have? Okay, that being none, we are going to close the public hearing and go into deliberations.
I make a motion to approve as a request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, the application is approved 5-0-0. Brian, could you just let the Leonard's know they didn't need to go to the hall? Could you let them know that their application has been approved? Be with us for a moment. The next application, Brian's out there, but the next application is Christopher and Colleen Grover. This is an application that I mentioned earlier that they have requested be continued.
No, withdrawn.
It's been withdrawn. I will not be attending tonight's meeting and wish to withdraw my application, so therefore, once again, the Grover application has been withdrawn. Okay, the next application, I'm going to go forward and read it while Brian is out there. Gerald J. Hebert Revocable Trust and Sandra Hebert trustee. Owners, applicants are seeking variances to allow an existing shed and chicken coop to be permitted uses on the property. The structures were placed there in violation of the zoning ordinance. The variances are required because the shed and chicken coop are placed within the wetland surface water conservation district, whereas Section 13334 and 13352 of the Gostown zoning ordinance states that no structures are permitted within the WSWC district. The shed is also placed within the accessory structure setback, which is 10 feet onside and real lot lines per Section 5.1 of the Gostown zoning ordinance. This property is located on 118 Mountain Base Road, MAP 42, Lot 52, in the agricultural zone. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Attorney Andy Sullivan. I represent the owner of the property.
Can I ask you just one moment? We need to make a motion on regional impact.
Sure.
I move it has no regional impact.
One second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this point, Kathy is a alternate, and Alan was on before. I'm going to take Alan off this time. I don't, wait a minute, let's see.
It's fine.
Will the next one come?
I want, yeah, okay, I want to leave. I want to keep on the next one, I'll keep Alan on this time. I'll keep the alternates on, and Kathy, you'll go on next time. Thank you.
The, speaking of regional impact, on the, both the Gostown Conservation Commission and the DS reviewed this, and neither one have any problem with it.
I bet that.
As part of the package. What we have here is kind of an unusual lot, up at the lake, it's triangular, and it's surrounded on all three sides by some sort of a right-of-way, even though it faces the lake, that is actually, on the north side, there's a 20-foot paper street right-of-way between the Hebert Lot and McCarthy Lot, which is Lot, Hebert Lot is Lot 52, McCarthy is Lot 2, it looks like, can't even read it here, Lot 2. And then in front of the Hebert Lot is a 20-foot right-of-way separating it and the concrete dam of the lake. Additionally, unique aspect of this lot, the outlet of the lake traverses the lot on the, running from west to east. So it's a small lot, it's surrounded by rightaways on all three sides, and it coincidentally has the stream running through it and the lake, so the entirety of the lot is in the wetland surface water conservation district. The building itself long since been, like most of the buildings down there, grandfathered, okay? Gerard Hebert recently died, and Sandy Hebert moved in unbeknownst to her, when she moved in, she also moved in her chicken coop and a shed, and apparently that incurred the wrath or the dislike of the neighbors, and this is a complaint-driven variance, as most variances are, I'm just complaint-driven. And we're here today about the coop and the shed. However, we're not here anymore about the coop because that has been removed, and the chickens have been removed. So we're really here today only about the shed. Okay, the shed is located just at the terminus of the gravel driveway, so it's to the west of the gravel driveway. That shed is an eight-by-10 shed. Again, obviously, the whole lot is in the, in the water conservation district, but that shed is about 90 feet scaled, about 90, 93 feet from the lake, but it, no matter how you slice it, where it's presently located, depending on what corner, it's 37 to 45 feet from the stream, which is also construed to be a surface water, so to point that out. The residential structure is small, and the shed is packed, okay? It's on cinder blocks, it can't be moved. Additionally, to the fact that it's, the entirety is in the water, I would call it the WSWC district, it is not 10 feet from the side yard, that 10-foot setback. Coincidentally, however, it's 20 feet from the next residential lot because the 20-foot right-of-way sits in between. That right-of-way is being used by McCarthy's, it's their driveway, it's one of these paper streets that people continue to use. Ultimately, there'll probably be some sort of a quiet title action that's, I'll need to refer to. Paper street gets discontinued, and you go to court typically, it's split half and half. So I make the observation that, number one, even though the shed is located on its own property line, it is 20 feet from the nearest residential butter, but someday, hopefully someday soon, when that 20-foot right-of-way is gotten rid of, it will meet a 10-foot setback because they'll acquire 10 of that 20 feet. McCarthy's require one, okay? But what can't be gotten rid of, the fact the entirety of the lot is in the water, WSWC area, whatever it is. But we look at what they allow in that area. What they allow is, it provides structures, they allow structures, no wetland is, would be destroyed. This thing's on cinder blocks, it's right by the gravel driveway, no wetland is going to be destroyed. It doesn't impact public drinking water supplies. It doesn't continually service the groundwater. It doesn't change the contour of the land or destroy vegetation, and it's compatible with the area. As many of you have been down there, I'm sure, the whole area is filled with lots, not as small as this, but with 50, 60-year-old lots with all sorts of, in shapes and locations from surface water outbuildings, because usually when they first start, the buildings are so small, people need outbuilds for their stuff.
Yeah.
And I included in the package a number of pictures just going from the boat going around the lake. Every, virtually every single lakeside property has outbuilds, often much closer than this. Granted, many of them are probably grandfathered in. I'm willing to bet without knowing, many of them are probably just put there, but they haven't been surfaced because there's no complaint driving the inquiry, which, that's fine, too. But if we look at the character of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is lot of side old buildings with outbuildings- of side old buildings with outbuildings on the lot to cover it. No different than this, except this one's further away from the water than most. On the other hand, the unique aspect of this lot is that stream that does run through it, which is unique in all the other lots. So the request here today has been limited just to the shed. Okay? The shed is absolutely needed because the house is so small, it's consolidation, she's moving. Someday she can sort through that stuff, but she just don't have any place to put things unless in the shed. The shed is not inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. In fact, it ties right into the character of the neighborhood. The fact that it's on a -- on the line, no 10-foot setback, the objective of that 10-foot setback is still met because it's 20 feet from the butter, and someday it will be the 10-foot. If we look at where it could be placed on this lot, this is the ideal place. It's as furthest away from either surface water as you can get. It also happens to be easy to place because it's right at the edge of the level contour of the land where the driveway ends. Anything -- placing it anything -- I mean, you could get further away from the stream, but you'd be moving it closer to the house, and now you're moving it down a little bit of a slope. This is the best spot for it. So the waiver we're seeking is to allow that shed to remain where it is, exactly where it is. However, if the board decides to say you can stay there, is it willing to move? Yes, willing to remove, but I think if you look at the material that was presented, this is the best spot for it. I'll entertain questions.
Does anybody have a question?
I -- you said you have taken the chickens and the chicken coop off of the table?
Correct.
Is it intended to return?
Nope.
Is it a permanent thing?
Nope.
Is it a temporary thing?
Gone. We're likely, but they're gone.
It'll be conditional.
Did they just move in in January?
They moved in about seven months ago.
Would one assume that the reason that they felt they could put the shed there is because there were so many other sheds in the neighborhood?
Absolutely. I mean, looking at the area, it just -- everybody's going, or at least one. There was no subduge or duplicity in trying to pull a fast one. Just never been in that area before as a resident, father did, and father lived there, moved in, everybody had a shed, put the shed there.
Madam Chair, Len has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, it's something I could address to Brian. I see that the notice of violation was dated October 31st. Have you made a subsequent inspection of it, and in this case, would removal of the chicken coop remediate the part or all of the notice of violation?
That actually is a subsequent notice of violation. There were two notice letters sent out. One was back in July, and that's what spurred this variance request. The second was regarding more the nuisance aspect of the chickens and that kind of thing. It also included a doghouse that's placed within the wetland surface water district. However, that's not on the table for the variance tonight, so I don't know that we can really discuss that tonight. But I had copied that second notice letter to you so that you would be aware of the use of the coop structure, you know, not knowing that they were going to remove it and take it off the table, so.
Okay, that answers my question.
The first letter went out July 22nd. On 8/29, DS sent a letter regarding the issue with the wetland setback district. On September 17th, we received the application for the variance. Because the application was not received within the amount of days prior to the hearing, it was not scheduled for our October meeting. It was therefore scheduled to the November meeting. On October 31st, the final letter went out by Brian to the applicant because the coop was still there. Since that time, apparently, the coop has been removed along with the chickens.
Correct.
So that's the timeframe of how we are, where we are with this application. Are there any further questions of the attorney? Okay, there being none, I'll ask you to just sit back and see if we have any other people that would like to speak on this application. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Maria Dolder. I'm an attorney, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy, who are the direct butters to this property. And since the chicken coop has been withdrawn from the application, we just want to make sure it's clear that so long as that shed is using -- being used solely for shed and not to be housing any type of animals whatsoever, they just don't want to see that the shed gets granted and then it turns into what they've taken off the table, which is for animals or a coop. They don't have any objection to just the shed. And with that, as long as everything else is off the table, that's what they wanted this board to know. We just ask that that be a condition of any approval.
Sure. I have a question. The attorney had explained that the shed is into the right-of-way.
Correct.
Does that create a problem?
Well, I mean, I think that if the right-of-way goes away, there's --
Or it's closer --
It's not in the right-of-way. It's close to the right-of-way. It's close to the right-of-way.
Yeah, so it's not technically into the right-of-way. They don't have any huge hard burn over where it's located. Quite frankly, like I said, their big concern is its use and that it not be turned into anything but a shed. So as long as that could be a condition of the approval, they don't have a problem with that.
Well, we thank them very much for being so amenable.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
You, too.
Do you have -- are there any other butters or interested parties that would like to speak on this application? There being none, do you have anything that you would like to say?
As long as we clarify, the shed is entirely located within the --
Yes.
Right.
And yes, I -- we've made those corrections to state that. We'll make sure in the minutes that they do state that, too. Okay. Is there any further comments or questions that anybody from the board has? Yeah?
Just one question. There was the doghouse. Has that been gone away?
That's not part of the application. That's not part of the -- unfortunately, that's not part of this application, so if it becomes an issue in the future, then they have to -- if somebody has another complaint, they need to reapply and go for another variance. Yeah. Because it was not part of this. Yeah.
It was only located there recently, so it was prior to when we started this whole thing.
Just to maybe make you feel a little bit more comfortable, DS doesn't have a problem with this.
I read it.
Yeah, they don't have a problem with any of that as far as the dog.
With the chicken coop itself. They didn't address the doghouse issue.
They didn't address the doghouse. So that -- they would have to look at that as a separate issue, unfortunately, and we can't juristick on that.
And also, as I read the conservation minutes, there was some discussion of the chickens themselves, but they decided to only restrict their comments to the structure and not the use. There was some concern, but they decided not to address it.
Right.
I --
It's a very unique parcel, being like .21 acres and zoned agricultural, because most agricultural plots you look at or land that you look at is, by our ordinances, are two acres. And they used to, prior to this, be one acre, and then that was changed to being two acres. So having a .21 acre agriculturally zoned piece of property is very, very, very unique.
I will just also include that I did receive from Kimberly Peace an email tonight regarding chicken coop. And so I don't know if the board wants to hear anything about that, since that's kind of off the table, but I can print that and have it available in the file, you know, for -- just for the record, basically.
Can you email us that information?
Sure.
Scan it and send it to us, so we might all have it to review for maybe future reference?
Sure.
That would be great. Anything further? Okay. There being none, I'm going to close the public hearing and look for discussion and entertain any motion that anybody sees. I'll speak at one.
I'll make a motion on it that we grant a variance to allow the existing shed to remain in place with the condition that the use of the structure be limited to shed and storage and not for keeping of any sort of animals.
And could I add to that? And that no chicken coops or chickens will be allowed in the future?
Their attorney doesn't sound -- I --
You don't think so? Okay.
The suggestion might be a condition of the shed would be leaving it in place not to be used for the raising of chickens and livestock.
Yeah. I like Alan's --
Secondly, that it be -- that reside entirely on the lot of record.
Okay.
And that they're going to certify that that's not in anybody else's property.
Okay.
Okay, amended to what he said.
Do you hear that?
Got it.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion on the floor? Seconded?
Oh, seconded.
Okay. Is there any further discussion about the application? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Saying none, the motion carries 5-0-0.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank them very much for removing the chicken coop. While you're here, I just wanted to -- excuse me? While you're here, I just wanted to make a brief reference to something from New Hampshire Fish and Games about feeding the ducks. And I copied it, and I just want to let you know that if feeding the ducks into the winter is not suggested because they could get stuck in the ice, they won't fly south, and they get stuck in the ice. So in trying to help save the population of the ducks that are on the pond, they suggest discontinuing feeding any animals after October 31st so that they can now resume into their natural wild habitat, and they will then go south to feed for themselves. Just so you know. Okay? And it's a wonderful website, New Hampshire Wildlife, New Hampshire Fish and Game is a wonderful -- and you have them all -- you have all that around you, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. At this point, the final application.
I will recuse myself as I am the presenter of the next case.
At this point, Kathy, you are now on board for this application. Janikin Associates Incorporated, owner and Amos Gate Architectural Group applicant, are seeking variances and a special exception to allow a mixed-use project that includes subdivision of the existing lot and development of both lots as follows. A special exception is needed because the proposal is to develop a non-conforming lot due to lack of sufficient frontage. The rear lot has 25 feet, whereas section 4.3 requires a minimum of 50 feet. Section 1473 authorizes such development if it meets section 14731 through 14734. A variance is also needed from section 4.3 of the Gostown zoning ordinance table of dimension regulations to allow residential density of 16.8 dwelling units per acre, whereas only 15 dwelling units per acre are allowed for the parcel in the rear if developed for multi-family use only. This would allow up to 54 dwelling units, whereas only 48 would be allowed on a 3.21 acre lot. A variance is needed from section 675 of the Gostown zoning ordinance table of maximum sign dimensions under the Village Commercial to erect a proposed 40-square-foot freestanding sign on the property, whereas the maximum size allowed for freestanding signs is 24 square feet. Another variance is needed from section 4.3 of the Gostown zoning ordinance table of dimension requirements to allow the lot to be subdivided into two non-conforming lots, one parcel without any frontage on a class V road and one parcel with only 25 feet of frontage on a class V road, whereas a minimum of 50 feet of frontage is required on both Another variance is needed from section 13334, 13335, 1334, and 13352 to build within outer 50 feet of the wetland surface water conservation district, the WSWC district, whereas these sections do not permit structures within a 100-foot buffer of defined surface waters. This variance also applies to section 14733 of the Gostown zoning ordinance due to proposed encroachment into the established setbacks. A variance is needed from section 13.2 of the Gostown zoning ordinance to allow new construction of paved parking areas, outside access ramps, outside decks, and other structures to the existing mill building remaining. The property is located on 15 Factory Street, map 34, lot 171, in the Village Commercial Here with us tonight is the applicant. Please state your name.
My name is Alan Yaton. I live at 82 Hillcrest Road, Gostown, New Hampshire. I am the applicant and the proposer for this project, on behalf of Mr. Janikin, but on behalf of myself. I'll approach this presentation in any fashion you'd like, Madam Chair. If you'd like to take each one individually, or would you like a presentation on all counts at once?
I'd like you to do the presentation on all accounts at once, and then I think when we go to decide what we're going to do, we'll take them individually.
Okay.
Oh, and excuse me. I would like to get a consensus from the board. What do you feel? Would you agree with that?
I'd prefer, yeah, a grand overview and then each piece accordingly.
Okay. That will be our decision.
So, good evening. I'm here this evening after a two-and-a-half-year journey of looking to develop a proposal to develop this property in Gostown. I've been aware of this property for a number of years, and I always thought it was a valuable piece of property for the downtown area of Gostown, but the way it sits right now, it is very unique in its shape, configuration, its history, and the, I'll call it, all the nuances that go with this site, which are unusual to any other piece of property in the town of Gostown. Now, may I stand up, Madam Chair, and use --
You can. Can I just ask you to just wait just a second before you do that, because we didn't do the regional impact part of it? Again, we're -- it's like our --
Nemesis.
Nemesis, it is. So I will entertain a motion regarding the regional impact.
Make a motion that does not have regional impact.
Make a motion that does not have regional impact.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there being none, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. To go back and a little history, this property is about five-and-a-half acres. It's bordered on the north side by the Piscataquod River. The Hadley Falls Dam is a noticeable feature that you can see from downtown and as you cross the bridge on Main Street. It's bordered on the south primarily by the Gostown Rail Trail, and it's bordered on the east by our sewage pump station that gathers sewage. There's actually easements on this site where sewer lines connecting to downtown and across the river come through the site and enters the sewage treatment plant. It's not the only access, but it's one of the two. The project site originally consists right now of about 112,000 square feet of building and pavement. When this project is complete, there'll be about 118,000 square feet of building and pavement when we're done. So, the increase in intensity of the property in terms of covered property is not very significant. So, let's address number one. The project requires a special exception. So, let's go back in history a little bit. The sewage treatment part of our town property used to be part of this property until 1960, when the town purchased this from the present owner and was granted easements to put the sewer lines down through there when it was a treatment plan prior to it becoming just a pump station. It's been modified a couple times over the years. But in the process, Factory Street had always been the driveway of access to the property, been used as far back as any history that I can find. Secondly, there used to be extensive frontage on East Union Street, but when they subdivided it to acquire the property, they left 25 feet remaining on East Union Street. And that's not even where the driveway is. The driveway is further wet. It actually crosses the rail trail again. So, what I'm asking for is a variance to allow development of this property, which has limited commercial use, near the Gostown Center into a complex where we reuse the existing brick mill buildings, that is, the three-story building, the boilerhouse, and the powerhouse, and redevelop those, which are primarily at the front of the site as you enter if you want to take a drive down in there. And all the, actually, existing structures would be removed, including any encroachment that is currently underway, that is being proposed, to remove any foundations that are across property line. There are some that are on the rail trail property. Some old foundations and part of the buildings actually encroach on the rail trail. Only one exit. The entrance of vehicle traffic, in terms of pedestrian safety and all that, will be ensured. It's a low density. The units themselves are smaller in nature, in terms of they're not huge, they're not three- and four-bedroom units, they're basically two-bedroom units. The project is meant to be individually owned, so that everybody that lives there has a vested interest in the success of the project and the success of the village. Site design is served by all public utilities, because we currently have sewer going through it. We have water going through it. We have electricity already there. We have lines. Now, there's always some, and there's drainage, all of which have to be identified. Some of it is updated, some of it we need to be updated during this construction process. So, the unique shape of the property is, it has three sides. Basically, you have riverside, which is basically a buffer zone. We'll talk about that a little later. And then, secondly, it's a rail trail, and I'm not going to really propose to do anything with the rail trail other than to remove any portions from my site that encroach on it and improve the banking and landscaping. So, it's the unique, uniqueness of this site. Basically, when you look at the site, very little of it can you see if you go across the river. In the summertime, you can't see much. When the leaves are down, you probably can see onto the site. There'll be a typical scale of buildings, which are two stories, except for the old mill building. I hope to save the chimney. And so, that basically addresses the special exception in terms of dimensions. I have 25 feet down here. That was left, what was left in the subdivision from 1960. This access has been used historically. I have an old sandbar map that goes back to 1880, that this has been traditionally used as access for the site. Now, this access, depending upon interpretation, and I went to see the selectmen last night, Factory Street stops at the rail trail. There's, I can't find anything, any conveyance that indicates that there's an access easement for this. If there was, I'd have frontage for this area too, on a street. I'd have a 50-foot frontage. I won't have it. I will have it if I can reach an agreement with the town to lay out the road to cross the rail trail. That's going to take a little bit of maneuvering with the rail trail people and with the selectmen. They have said they'll get back to me, not post haste, but soon, about some decision is out, which way they'd like to go. But they, at some point in time, I will have access to it. I don't have it now, and I don't want it to hold up the development of this project. So, that's why I'm here on the special exception. Number two is to allow a residential density that's greater than 15 dwelling units per acre. Now, in this site, the uniqueness of this site is this. I have buffer zones that I want to preserve. I have easements through the site granted to the town. I have easements granted to Public Service Company of New Hampshire, always take to reduce, if you want to call it, the buildable area in this site. But given the size of the buildings, the size of the units, now, I'm not talking about big units. I'm talking, these are like cottages. These are 900-square-foot to 1,000-square-foot units for sale. These are a little bit larger on the river. Amenities, basically, I'm trying to get people here that are willing to invest and live here in town. Could be somebody that wants to stay in town but doesn't want the big house with the pool on five acres out in the back 40. So, what I'm saying is, in comparison to other areas of the town, if you go across the river on the other side and take a contiguous block of the same size area, three-and-a-half acres, there's more units over here per acre than I'm proposing here, even though I've subtracted all the buffer areas and the easements. So, I think it's a fair thing. It's not crowded. There's plenty of green space. If you think about this site, there's 247,000 square feet. When it's all done between buildings and pavement and driveways, that only comes to 118. So, it's less than 50% of the site is actually covered with buildings or impervious surfaces. So, granted, the variance would be in the public interest, because it takes a site that hasn't been developed and allows it to add to the community, the community spirit that we have here in Gostown. The spirit of the ordinance is preserved in that, in consideration of its location, its shape, and all the other configurations, it's reasonable to assume that residential was some mixed use. Now, I have proposed a restaurant with a deck on the river, a bakery, and a mini brewery for this location. Now, it all, those all have their own little nuances to go with it, but it's a mixture of, how can I get more people to come here, not just the people that live here? What other things can I offer to the residents in downtown to come and participate? Bakery, restaurant, hopefully. So, 54 housing units leaves a density of 16.8, where 15 is allowed. The economic enterprise, potential customers, also adds to the walkability of this site, which is of a community interest also. The site design allows a lot of green space in preserving the buffer along the river. There is no intention of this, for this project to infringe upon the 50-feet buffer or 50-foot buffer along the river, except later on, I'm asking for a variance so that I can build a deck out here. Some of the existing buildings themselves are within the 50-foot setback to begin with. And so, for me to be able to change the use and put something else different in there other than a power station, I have to have a variance to do so. And I'd like to connect those buildings too with some stairs. They're not all at the same elevations either, in terms of access. Would it diminish the, this development diminish surrounding properties? Certainly, it's not going to have an effect on the pump station. I'm trying to preserve the visual from across the river, so I don't think it will affect the folks across the river. I have a nice green barrier to the church and several residents on East Union Street via the rail trail, which is fully matured treeed. And so, I think I look at this and I say, I think this is the highest and best use for this site. It also has limited exposure in terms of commercial, meaning if you're looking at a residence, you're not looking for exposure. You're looking for access and convenience. If it was to be developed commercially, I'd be looking for somebody who, say it's a frozen yogurt shop. They'd want to be right out on Main Street in Gumby's, whole store, for visibility. Residentially, they're looking for that visibility. Someone might ask, well, how is anybody going to know there's a restaurant there? That's another part of this application is, that I want to get to. So, number three is signage. Now, in this district, I'm allowed a 24-foot sign. That's the size of this table in front of you. Now, the situation there is this. I'm 200 feet from Main Street to the face of the site. If I owned the old Cumberland Farms, I'd be putting, wanting to put a sign right out there, but I don't. And I don't think I'll have the opportunity. So, I need something visible. Granted, as you're going by, it's not that greatly visible, but people will know where it's at, that has letters big enough that you can see it from Main Street. That's the key. And I see Hadley Falls Mill or the Dam Diner, or whatever you want to call it down there. Can I tell, can I see, can I see it from the street? Technically speaking, I don't want to alter the course or the landscaping on the rail trail, because it's really nice. But on the edge of the road, there's enough visibility there for you to be able to see, and I need a big enough sign so I can read, that it's readable from that distance. Now, I've worked with Barlow signs on this issue. They're the ones that recommended a bigger sign, so they could put bigger letters, so that it'd be more readable and recognizable from Main Street. Now, the spirit of the ordinance is, we need to be able to demonstrate that we can see it and find it. If you look for the sign that said Factory Street, does anybody have any idea where it is? I can't find it. Right now, if you go down there and look for a sign that says Factory Street, I bet you can't find it. There's no post down there, there's no nothing down there that says Factory Street. So, identification is important. Visibility come in the other direction is important also, but we can see the mill building, and it's always inquisitive. When people see it, what do they see? They see the chimney, and they see the mill building, and they see the thing, the big sign down, the big sign down there that says dam, danger, right there on the head of the dam. That's the first thing you see, because it's visible and it's sizable. That sign that says is twice as big as what we're talking about on the street. Surrounding properties would not be diminished? There's only two properties out here. One is a zoned, was a former business. Signage is gone. This is a residence, and of course, we have the church property adjacent to that. So, visibly, there's no, the signage, the location of this signage is, will not affect anybody's property values or import their visibility of the site, and the signage itself, internally lit letters, not signed, letters only. So, it's a background with internally lit letters timed to go off at night. Now, my application says 11:00 PM. And the reason for that is, I don't want to be there after 11:00 PM running that restaurant, because the restaurant is for me, it's not for somebody else. Okay? Now, if someone's going to ask me why you want a restaurant, and that's another story in itself. Little enforcement of the ordinance, I think, would mean a small sign, non-readable. I'm looking for a bigger sign so they can read it. Number four, project requires a variance to allow the site to be divided into, and this is an interesting subject. I'm proposing to divide the site into two categories, one residential and one mixed use. Okay? Mixed use, because I'm having a restaurant, bakery, and a brewery on the first floor. On the upper two floors of the mill building, I'm proposing 10 condo units, for-sale units. Two different entities, two different management criteria. You're going to ask, well, how does all this happen? My attorney assures me that easements and whatever can be accomplished to allow two different organizations. Now, when I divide this in two, I have no frontage on this lot, and that's why we're here. All right? I could have, may have. That's all I can say at the moment. It's all about financing for the project. Two different entities financing the project. One entity doesn't want the whole pie. Okay? And I've been rounding around this for two years, trying to develop a financial package for this, and the only way I can do it is to work with two different institutions on this project. I'm willing to take that risk. So, technically, it has no right of way. I made this suggestion from prior plans seen by the board to grant an easement, and that was thwarted a number of years ago by town ballot in 2004 or '05 for a specific project that was proposed for this site back then. This is a totally different project. It's a totally different concept of how the site would be utilized, and I don't want comparisons made to what was proposed and approved at an earlier time. The front of the property exists by use, and I may very well have it in the very near future if they extend the road. But to enforce the strict regulation of this as being the primary exit and egress for the last 100 years, to not allow that to remain would be detrimental to the interest of the project and to the community as a whole. Number five, this is a, one where several different departments become involved, and I'm looking for a variance from the surface water buffer map. Now, when I served on the planning board a number of years ago, when the Shoreline Protection Act came along, we had the opportunity to exempt a lot of parcels from being part of that state-adopted ordinance. And the planning board at the time took several properties above and below the river here, the bridge on Main Street, and had them omitted from the Shoreline Protection Act. Now, consequently, the town adopts this SW...
WSWC.
Oh, I can't read.
WSWC.
I can't read. My eyeglasses are bad. But anyways, created a 100-foot buffer here. Now, if you take the literal stance of that 100-foot buffer on the river, it goes right through the middle of the building, which means technically, I can't redevelop it, I can't reuse it, and I can't change the use of that building without coming before this board. Okay? So, the board can grant a way, can grant a variance to allow construction of the decks, parking areas. Now, parking area already exists here, as does the garage, the old garage, and the residents that currently resided in are already in the buffer zone, and I'm actually removing those. The front area here is all paved also. So, I'm basically adding some landscaping. So, the increase in the area is... So the increase in the area is very small. This fifty-foot buffer you can see is a line that goes through, includes the entire powerhouse. If I connect any of these structures, I continue to have a, a particular problem in terms of what can be done. I've been to the Conservation Commission, we've talked about the buffer zone. And the intent was to protect the fifty-foot buffer and only work in these areas where currently disturbed, currently have buildings and a small additional area. And their comments were, Alan, when you get to the planning board, see if you can take and reduce the number of parking spaces associated with the restaurant so that you can decrease the amount in closeness to the river of the parking. And I would agree to do that. If you, if you take a look at the localized central master plan, I thought it was up here somewhere. No, it's not here tonight. It's been removed. Shows in a very schematic things what things can happen and how, how things can progress. And, and density of residential is key. When you think about the success of businesses in downtown Goffstown, if people come here, people walk here. My observation on the, on, onsite on weekends and during the week is this rail trail is used heavily. There are a lot of people ride, walk, jog, run, you name it, families and everybody, kids and bicycles. And we want to encourage that to a greater degree. And in the future of housing, there's also densification. Nobody wants to hear that. But I think thirty years from now, you'll find that densification will be a forefront issue for all of us. Because people want to be closer to where they're going to need or want. I'll probably be the only one living on my acreage up on Hillcrest Road because I'm a die-hard country boy. But I do believe in planning for the future. So to build in the, in the buffer, the spirit of the ordinance would be held, meaning we're going to protect it. We want to work in the outer fifty feet, which is allowed, has been allowed by variance before on this site. So this is not a new issue for this particular project. It would allow the mill building to be reused, if you want to call it, redeveloped into a new use because it's been manufacturing. Years ago, I bought tabletops from a company that was manufacturing tabletops in there. It used to be part of Hermstorf Manufacturing, which was a very large case what manufacturer in Manchester at one time. This was the Hermstorf property originally. So I think that the barriers that are surrounding property visually, we protect. We've got physical barriers to the budding residential areas. So I don't see, we're not introducing a new concept of living. We're not introducing something that's different than housing on this site. It would be a negative impact on residential neighborhoods that surround downtown Gofftown. Now, last but not least, you have to know that the river gets high and there's a lot of water in the river from time to time. So I need a variance to the flood hazard district. Now, if you, if you remember, we had some floods in oh-five, oh-six, oh-seven. We had five-hundred-year rainstorm, hundred-year rainstorms. This site never had any water on it. Now, if you look at the FEMA map, there's a small area in here that says it floods. I can find no record of that flooding. There's drainage, underground drainage on the site. That probably, if there was any water, worked well. I think it all goes to the river now. So I'm looking for a variance so I can construct the deck out to the edge of the Penn Stock that's on the edge of the river. Would be a great feature to the restaurant to be able to have an outside activity, outside dining on this deck. But at the same time, would allow me to recognize that that district, flood hazard district exists because to have it removed requires Army Corps of Engineers in eighteen months just to do the paperwork. I'd rather, a small impact in the area. This deck is a, is an above-ground structure. It's not something that has a foundation, has posts and corals. So all of the water can still move freely, freely through the site. But I need to build handicap ramps, I need to build access stairs. None of that exists to meet any type of code issues at the present time. So the value of this work down here, certainly not going to impact anything in the neighborhood. Certainly won't impact the, what I call the hundred-year floodplain. This doesn't exist according to our history. In the grandeur of variance, it's substantial justice, it's, it's small. It would be a great benefit to the town. Obviously, surrounding properties here again. We're going to reuse the mill building. It's not going to be a noise nuisance. And if someone likes to listen to piano, they can have to, they can have to listen to me play it. And I can't play a piano, okay? I'm not going to try. But the thing is, in decent Bay Ave, like when we had the pumpkin fest, there was some live entertainment down there on the backstreet, Mill Street. They were playing there all day. I didn't think it bothered anybody, actually. So I don't think that any of these activities are creating any nuisance for the residents on one side of the river or the other. Literal enforcement would preclude any redevelopment of this property. Meaning I need parking, I need access, and I need amenities beyond just a building or a use that will attract more people. That's a, if you want to call it's driven by economics, it's driven because I'm a capitalist, okay? And I'm not going to do something that won't make money. These amenities like this can attract a lot of different organizations. It could attract a Rotary Club meeting, for instance, or a Lions Club meeting. I would encourage everybody to participate for that matter. So I think it would be a great benefit to the community. Now, that's about the end of my presentation, but I'm sure, and I hope, there are questions. And I'll be due, my diligence to try to address them the best way I can. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I have a question about the project as a whole. And it is a unique property. And I think what you've presented is creative and practical. However, I'm curious what other type of development that you think would be suitable or practical if, if this project just were to go away for whatever reason? What other type of development do you think would be suitable for the property given, given the restrictions it has?
The, I've been involved with the project since the middle of two thousand and eleven. The first couple of years I spent looking at companies or businesses that I could think about relocating here, contacting them, and I found zero interest for a number of reasons. The commercial enterprises are looking for visibility. It's not something I could give them. Industrial occupancies, we're looking for, of all things, gas utilities, which this site does not have. And so it, it doesn't have all the features that other available properties have. So when people look at this, I'm not, this lot is not on the top of their to-do and investigate list. So the, in two years, I did not have a single interested party to develop on this site. And secondly, a lot of the folks were looking for a building of fifty to a hundred thousand square feet. But with the easements on the site, can't provide it. And I'm not sure I want a thirty-five-foot-tall, a hundred-thousand-square-foot building in downtown Gofftown. And I don't think Gofftown does either. So as a resident of Gofftown, what I'm proposing is something I think is good for the town. And after looking at it, I believe people make a successful downtown. It's not how many stores you have, because you have the people who bring the stores if they were, if they wish to come. There'll be a demand for the pharmacy, there'll be a demand for, I shouldn't say barbershop because I don't go to one, but.
There is one across the street.
But there's one across the street, that's correct.
We have a.
So it may bring success to some of those businesses too with more people in walkability distances. But I did look for two years.
Len?
I agree that I think it's a very creative, interesting reuse of a building that right now is an eyesore, frankly. I went down, I did take a drive down there on Sunday. I met a very large, imposing-looking man who I am presuming is the, the watchman or the guardian of the property. And but I drove through and took a look at it and I think that there's a substantial amount that could be done to improve it that would be good for the town. My big concern is traffic and access. I think all those, anyone who's ever made that trip to Cumberland Farms, tried to pull out of there, anybody who's gone to a house pharmacy and tried to pull out of there, you've got one big problem there because you're coming over a blind hill. I've seen a lot of near collisions there over the years. What, what in terms of off-site improvements, how, if you're going to be bringing this amount of residential traffic, if this is your primary ingress and egress from a property, what kind of off-site work could be done to improve that and lessen the chance of accidents of people pulling out of there?
Two things. You could have a second egress on East Union Street. But technically speaking, it's in the middle of the, the twenty-five feet that this property is in the middle of a gully. There's a big drainage gully right there at the end of that, that twenty-five feet. The existing driveway actually goes across the rail trail. Could you locate, could you point that out on the map where that is for clarity? There's, there's twenty-five-point-eight feet right here. The actual drive, that's, that's this little section from dot to dot. The actual driveway is over here in the location to the west, about thirty-five feet. You can see some basic topography differences there that indicate the drive that went down in there. That's not used, it's actually barricaded right now. It's never been used at, to my knowledge, on this site. It's, it's there. As far as I've been here in town, I don't know of any use that that back area has been. The prior proposals that were approved by the town's planning board had a joint connection through the sewage pump station driveway. It was proposed. I don't think that's the ideal solution. And also, that other proposal was for a much bigger four-story apartment building that I thought was a scale issue. I just, traffic. I've seen all the traffic studies that were done on that, on prior proposals. All the traffic was done showing going out through Factory Street. It was never done, the traffic showing going out onto East Union Street.
And, and given that, what can you do to make Factory Street better if you're talking about a substantial increase in traffic there?
The, basically, the, the site is being used. Have not done a current traffic study based upon how it's being used and the, and the, the traffic that generates there. Secondly, what can be done? Technically speaking, the right-of-way for Factory Street is twenty-six feet wide. So it's paved, twenty-four feet, and it does this in that twenty-four feet. It's not a straight line. There's no room for sidewalks. That's why I'm trying to reach a deal on Cumberland Farms. Because then I can take and do fifty feet, I can do sidewalks, and I can make whatever necessary revisions and changes to that access might be to facilitate that. That's something further down. The, at the TRC this morning, there was a question that the police department raised as well as the fire department. And I've got to work with both of those agencies to, to reach their approval for this, with your traffic question. So others will look at it strongly before it'll be approved by a planning board.
I have a few questions. I'm going to first predicate by saying that I think this is a little premature for the zoning board. When we go down the first one, the special exception, my concern is similar to Len's concern, which has to deal with the traffic. And we have no traffic study that has been presented to us on this particular application. Because under the, one of the conditions of getting a special exception, of course, the number one is that you have to meet all five conditions. But the one condition is that the use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated. And I think in order for this board to consider approving a special exception, we need to know what kind of formal amelioration you would be offering to ameliorate the, the traffic issue of that many vehicles coming out of Factory Street. And I think that you've been very honest in saying that you're trying to work on that with your discussions with the Cumberland Farms. I would say that would be the number one issue that I would have right now as far as I'm concerned with, with the special exception. I haven't gone into great deal, detail on the other four criterias because that one, to me, is a, is flagrant. And it's not only flagrant to me, having been at the TRC meeting this morning, which I was there, it is a concern by the police department and by the fire department about the access in and out of this particular parcel. I, I think that the fact that we, we don't have a conceptual use acceptance by the planning board as to whether or not they are going to accept this as a mixed-use development, they are going to accept this as residential with the restaurant, the mini brewery, the bakery, whatever you are presenting. I'm looking at a plan that I'm being asked to, to issue variances on and I'm not even sure whether the town's going to conceptually approve it. My, my thinking is they probably will. But the fact of the matter is, as of this particular moment, at this particular hour, it has not been conceptually approved as a plan. Those are my, those are, that, those concerns. I'm concerned about the building acreage. The, you had mentioned, what, what is the actual buildable acreage that is associated with this parcel? I would like to see from you what the calculation you used in calculating how many units are buildable, subtracting out easements and subtracting out buffers. And I don't see that on the plan. And I'm not quite sure if what you're proposing, based upon the fact that I don't have that calculation, is the true calculation as to what actually can be built there. And I'd like to see what you have taken out for easements and for setbacks and anything else which might be considered a non-buildable area. As far as the signs concerned, I'm a little mixed on that sign. I, I find it a bit of a stretch to say that you're going to have illuminated letters and, and. and not illuminated sign, but maybe Kathy might be helpful to me on that. I, I don't know if that really is distinguished within our ordinances, but if it's internally illuminated, whether it be a sign or whether it be letters on the sign, it, it looks like, I shouldn't say duck, because it just, it looks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So, that's the only concern I have about the sign at this present time. I would start, my, my number one concern would be the description of that sign. In my opinion, it is an internally illuminated sign, but we have no pictures of what you're talking about, we have no references to look at to make a, a valid decision as to whether or not to grant that variance. And I don't want you to misinterpret what I'm, I'm saying here. I am not, um, I'm not against this, um, development. I would like nothing better, having lived here since 1976 myself, to see something that would, um, improve and greatly improve that particular parcel. And I would have to say that I firmly believe that you are on the right track. There are a lot of obstacles we are still having to get over, and this is a very first presentation, um, to, to a board, other than the Board of Selectmen, I believe, last night when you, we, you were, and I watched you last night, too, um, trying to get up to snuff as to where we were gonna be tonight on this particular parcel, and, and, uh, they have, taken that under advisement, and we'll be discussing it. So, they have not even, um, come forward as to what their feeling is on, on the request that you have from them. I, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the subdivision of the property, and I'm a bit concerned that you're asking us to, um, take a non-conforming lot and create another non-conforming lot. And that's, that's, as far as our zoning ordinance is a concern, they really don't look highly on, on, uh, creating a non-conforming lot from a non-conforming lot. I don't think that's, that's a high on my list of, of the concerns, which I have already listed, but, um, I, I, I stumble, and I, I don't quite understand how, if that land is subdivided into two parcels, but yet there's one overseeing entity, which I would assume would be you, up here, and then there'd be another owner on this parcel and another owner on this parcel. Who, I guess my, my, my concern from a town aspect i- is why, why we're subdividing it, because you have people that don't agree with each other, but is the subdivision the only way that that issue could be resolved, other than some legal jargon that might be put into writing, um, which would separate their responsibilities legally in a document other than in a subdivision? And my impression was that this whole parcel was going to be a whole entity of a mixed-use development, but, um, now we're, you're saying that Lot One would be the mixed-use with the restaurant, mul, I think you said five units per floor, two floors above that in the mill. So, we'd have two floors of five units, 10 units each above the brick building, which I heard this morning. That would be the mixed-use side, and then the other side would just be the residential side, from what you're saying, from the subdivision. And, um, I, I haven't, I don't know whether that subdivision is going to be approved or not. So, I, I think there are still a lot of questions here. I certainly don't wanna take the aspect that, that, um, I wanna negate such an application because I don't have sufficient information on, on some of this. And it's the first, it's the first step into the arena that, of this whole plan that's being presented to the town. Safety of, of pedestrians and vehicular traffic is very concerning and will always be concerning in this village because of, of the character of the village here. So, I would just say, um, at this point, those are, those are, I think, oh, I know there was one other issue. Wait. There was one issue that had to do with the floods, and you had mentioned about the flood zones. And the, this morning, what I heard was that the Boiler House flooded from the floods, and that possible petroleum products were released into the ground. So, that in itself tells you that, that the area did flood. So, I don't know if your statement was that it hadn't flooded, uh, but this morning it caused, the floods caused damage on the sites, and, um, that was an issue as far as the water situation, utility situation, which is part of the criteria, the special exception. What I heard this morning is that there is water there, there's no question that there's water there. But there is question as to what has to be done to make that even a better system. I don't even know if that's even part of our, our concern, but it enters into you, what utilities are, are, are at that site at the present time, because that is all, it has to be there, all those utilities need to be there. I know, I know our sewer is there, but I know that the, um, the issue with the water is a little stretching, um, as to what actually has water on that site and what doesn't have water on that site. But it's obtainable, and I think that's the, that's the number one, um, criteria is that, that there is water. So, I would say the utilities are there, but I'm just a little concerned about the condition of the utility of the water, but I'm more concerned about the fact that it did flood at some point, and flooding was an issue on that site. So, but, but, and that's a big but. But, I don't think there's anything here between what you have asked for special exceptions and variances, which when we get further, and I am, I, I am saying get further along into this, that, um, there, there is possibly light at the end of the tunnel here. And I'm just saying that because I want it open on the board, I want it open. I, I am, I, I'm definitely not planning on voting on this tonight, to be very honest with you, um, because of what I have stated to you. And I just thank you for your terrific job of your presentation, and we'll continue to hear more on this, I'm sure.
Can I try to answer a couple of your questions?
Yes.
While I think of the answers?
Yes, yes.
Okay. In terms of oil on the site, um, it can't be a recent vintage, because the two, two oil tanks were moved in 95 and 97, the services building. There is an above-ground, containerized steel tank in the old Boiler House, the services are complex now. It's actually in a concrete tub, and it meets all of the state statutes. I have 100 pages of reports from DES on what's, what has happened on that site, and what has been removed over the last 23 years, something like that. But both oil tanks were, were actually physically removed from the site. There was one on the front of the building, and there was one on the back of the building, totaling about 18,000 gallons. Both have been removed, and the test reports indicate there was no leakage from either tank. The other, the current tank used to service the boiler, is a number-two oil, it's 2,000 gallons, it's in a concrete container. I don't believe that one's leaking. Now, all the information I could find is that the site was not flooded. There was Lieutenant Connor that talked about flooding on the site. He lives in the neighborhood on the other side of the river, I'm sure he's well aware of it, um, and I need to follow up with him on that. In terms of what comes first, variance or planning board? You go to the planning board, you know I served on it. Variance is first, so you don't go to the board.
That, that, I will, I, I will address that, because having gone to a recent workshop, that isn't always the case. There are cases when you, the planning board can go before the, the zoning board.
Well, if, from my point of planning...
Yeah.
The horse is the variances, the cart is the planning board.
Okay.
Okay? So, I need to solve my issues here, before I spend a lot of money on engineering costs. Traffic studies, there's been several of them done, they can verify that a larger development produces this, and this project will produce less. I think you can be assured of that. In terms of the building acreage and what's in and what's out, um, that's all been calculated. Unfortunately, I did not include that, I can't provide that. But it's, um, 249,632 square feet, that's the site. It's covered by 112,000 square foot of buildings and concrete foundations now. When I get done, there'll be 118,000 square feet of building and coverage when I get done, which is less than 50% of the total lot. I, I think the, why divide it up? That was a best advice from my banker and my attorney, in terms of financing the project, to individually LLCs controlled by me. And it happens to be how to make it work, um, so that the housing part of the project doesn't feel like they're being impinged upon by the LLC that owns the restaurant, basically, and their own separate ruling entity in terms of how it's managed and how it's taken care of. The only thing that exists between the two entities are cross-easements to allow access and for maintenance of the driveways and snow plowing and that kind of stuff. They may have a joint agreement, and they might not. So, it was to be controlled by two different groups. One's a homeowners association, one is controlled by an LLC. Two different, two different entities owned by the same group, but it's, uh, two different organizations to ensure the benefits to the people that live here. That's the best advice I can give you right now, 'cause it's the best advice I've received from attorneys and bankers.
Chair, can I just add some additional information? Regarding the sign, the illumination of it, um, the illumination is not a concern for the, for the board, it's the size of the sign that's, that's really the concern. The size was mentioned, that the limitation is 24 feet, he's asking for 40 square feet. The illumination is only limited when you're within 250 feet of a residential zone, and if you're not within 250 feet of that residential zone, then you don't have to be limited to the, uh, external illumination only. So, um, that's just kind of a point of clarification. And then also on the density, I actually went through the density, um, pretty closely with Alan before we put the notice out and made sure that, um, the, that the density was calculated correctly. We used the definition in the front of the zoning ordinance regarding buildable area, um, and because in the, uh, section four, it asks for, um, uh, in, in the, in the calculation, it says you can get 15 dwelling units per buildable acreage, per buildable acre. So, we looked at the definition, and the definition, um, requires you just to remove any submerged land area, which there is no submerged area on the site, wetlands, which there are no wetlands, any land within 50 feet of wetlands. So, we removed a 50-foot buffer from the edge of the river, and at least, uh, oh, sorry, of at least 2,000 contiguous square feet, wetlands of at least 2,000. And then slopes in excess of 25%. I don't believe there are any on the site, I can't, I can't recall, but it, um, he would...
Maybe a small area on the rail trail as it, as it goes across the property, but it's not significant.
And then, uh, high-tension power line easements, which I think there's a, an easement, but I don't know that it's a high tension, uh, well, anyway, high-tension power line easements and the area of any proposed public or private street rights-of-way. So, we went through all these, um, he calculated the, um, amount of acreage left over after removing those, and that was what we put in the notice as the 3.21 acres. And that 3.21 acres was for the rear lot, because that was the one that needed the variance, not the front lot. So, the rear lot, buildable acreage was 3.21. When you calculate that with the 15 dwelling units per acre, um, that becomes 48, and what his proposal is, is for 54. And so, that extra six dwelling units is what required the, the, uh, the variance to be applied for.
And the easements?
The easements, are you asking what the square footage of the easements are?
No, were the, were the easements, I didn't hear you say that the easements were part of the calculation.
Well, it's, if you look back at...
And that's why I would have liked, I would like to see, I would like to see the buildable area calculation.
If you look back at the, um, definition, like the sewer easement doesn't necessarily need to be calculated into that based on the definition. It says slopes in excess, or the wetlands submerged areas, um, slopes in excess of 25%, high-tension power line easements, and any, and the area of any proposed public or private street rights-of-way. So, sewer line easement doesn't, isn't calculated in as part of that, um, that buildable acreage area. Now, obviously, you can't build within that area, but when you're calculating the density, you don't have to, you don't have to remove that.
I think in the past easements have been removed, but I'll just double-check with that in the past, Brian, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but I think in the, on some projects in the past, they have.
I don't know if that was done just as a...
I don't know, like I said.
Yeah, but based on this, you know, that's...
Yeah.
...what we went off of.
I'm not sure. Okay. Now, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, Len?
Just, and I'll keep going back to it, because I think that the, um, frontage and access questions are my threshold. Though I'd just like to know for purposes of comparison, how many tenants, businesses, what kind of usage is the site getting now with its existing versus, we're talking about adding 54 residential units, the amount of traffic for comparison purposes? How many people have you got using the site now on a daily basis?
Can I just clarify, too, one thing? There's, there's 54 units in the back, and there's 10 additional units, so there's a total of 64.
So, we're talking about 64 units, thank you for catching that, Brian.
The existing mill building is not being used at all, totally vacant, empty. The existing, now called manager's house, is being rented and is occupied. That's a building that would be removed. The first building in on your right, which is a three-story, uh, heavy timber building, um, the doors are locked, and when they're open, you can hear, they're in there chopping up cars, under what guise, I have no idea. Part of the buildings you can see down there don't have roofs, are full of old cars and junk. The existing concrete block building at the back of the mill building is used as a scrap metal dealer, and another, uh, automotive shop where he repairs and, well, makes older cars, uh, inspection passable. That's the only activity on the site. If you go down there, and if you've been down there... If you go down there and if you've been down there, there's a lot of stuff just laying around. The existing pole building has rented stalls for a tree service. I don't know, he's rented a couple of the other stalls, so a couple of local companies who store their vehicles down there presently. I think one of them was a tree service. So the daily traffic in and out of there is fairly negligible at this point. I was there for two hours last Friday. In two hours, there were 41 cars came on site on Friday afternoon. I think that's a goodly amount of cars. I couldn't believe how many vehicles came in and out of the site. Now, they all went to one of those three places. Most of them went to the scrap dealer. That's huge in there. That whole back building is nothing but scrap metal. Recyclable. He's busy there all day long. There's at least one or two vehicles there every time I've ever been down there. Now, I don't consider those ideal commercial customers for this site. That's something I want to see continue. They need to be cleaned up and they need to be moved elsewhere, please. And your proposal suggests that all of the existing buildings on site, other than the mill building itself, would be demolished and removed. I've had a structural engineer in there and there's not one of them that's worth saving. Costs too much to repair them. The large block building with the metal roof probably could stand up, but I don't visualize a use for that building, given its size, shape, and height. 24-foot high, basically pallet storage in there now. Metal bins. I can think of a much better use for this property than that. Premature for the board, I'll ask that. I have to choose what comes first, unfortunately, and that's why I'm here. We probably all have different opinions about that. My personal preference is I need to make sure that before I take this project too far, that I can meet the physical requirements of the local regulations. I can solve engineering problems, I can solve traffic problems, I can solve all those kind of issues. I can solve sewer and water and all those utilities. Those are technical issues that have solutions. But I really need to know, can I? And that's the question. Next week, I'm going to the planning board on conditional use permits to allow some of these, some, this project to happen on this site. Our zoning ordinance is not as complex as a lot of them in the state of New Hampshire, but it has some nuances that are different. And so that's why I prefer professionally to address the variance requests or necessities beforehand. Most planning boards in the state of New Hampshire require those to happen beforehand so that there's no issues that come up during the planning process that haven't been foreseen that require some other adjudication. So I'm trying to prevent that by being here first. Not that I want to give this board the first crack at this project, but I'm here because I think it's professionally the best way to go about it.
And I just want to explain to you, my, I think the number one concern that is, on my behalf, is some of the, at least one of the variances that has been requested here has to do with the amount of units that is above the allowable amount of units based upon the buildable area that you're requesting. And there is, there are issues with accessibility. And part of the second access, which is off of East Union Street, there is a building that is, that would prohibit the accessibility of vehicles coming from East Union Street onto that property. So maybe that variance won't be needed. And I just think we need to fine tune it a little bit further to see, I think, like I said, I, I think this is putting the cart before the horse before you find, before we find out whether or not this town is going to accept this at, as, under a conditional use permit. And if they feel that this is a conditional use on this particular piece of property, that they would like to see this town go forward with, then I would say, then you've gotten that next, next Thursday from the planning board and you'll be right in line to present to the zoning board exactly what a conditional use permit will be given to and will be able, I would be able to make a better judgment on a more concrete plan than what's here.
I understand. The second theory on this subject has to do with the gross square footage of what you built. For instance, if, if for instance I built, had 48 units, it doesn't restrict size. And maybe we need to recognize the fact that these are not as big as I might customarily build, which would be somewheres between 100 square feet. The smallest of these units are 800 square feet, so the total gross square footage actually is probably considerably less than I might put use on another project. I mean, I have projects in Manchester with 1,200 and 1,400 square foot units. None of these units even come close to this. These are, these are small. So I think maybe there should be some recognition of that also in terms, it doesn't stated in the ordinance, but I'd like to, you know, say, state that the total square footage of this is probably considerably less than a typical project on the for-sale market in other communities.
And I, and I think also, and I'm going to wrap this up because we do have people that are here, but I do think also, I also heard that your plans for construction are probably next year. Obviously not the end of this year, but you're planning on, while this goes through, to start your, your development if it's approved next, next year in the summer, is that correct? Is that what I heard today?
Yes. As to allow me enough time to get through the planning board process because on this site, if I could do that approval process with the planning board in five months, that would be a miracle. So I'm already looking at May, June. I just don't want to miss next year. I think the timing is correct for right now to do this development. I think it would be a boon to the community. And to be quite honest with you, I'd like to hear what anybody in the audience has to ask about the project.
Yes.
Because I think that's also important.
Absolutely. Does anyone have any further questions? No. Just, we may be asking you to come back, back up, Al, so.
I'm going to sit down and let anybody who wishes to speak to please do so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, before we go any further, we're going to, at this point, take a five-minute break. So I'm just going to have you all sit here, think about what we've been discussing. We're going to take a five-minute break and we will be back at 10 after nine.
Welcome back. It's now ten after nine, and we will continue with the discussion regarding the Factory Street property. Are there any abutters in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Oh, there is one. Would you please introduce yourself?
I'm David Pierce. I live at 21 Mill Street, and I'm shown on the plan as an abutter to the property.
Well?
Thank you. I urge the board to take action on these special exceptions and variances, and I and my wife are in favor of the proposed project and find no issues with these special exceptions or variances which are required from an abutter's point of view. And I'm glad that Mr. Eaton mentioned this evening about the present use of property. It's not very pleasant to have a scrap metal dealer abutting your property. I kiddingly tell my wife it's like hearing somebody play tiddlywinks with manhole covers all day long as metal is being flipped and disassembled and torn apart. So I would, a residential setting would be much quieter. And I'm pleased in my conversations with Mr. Eaton that he's maintaining the vegetation growth that is in that fifty-foot setback from the river. And the, and I, because I'm a project manager for the development of the Gulfstown Rail Trail, I have an interest from that point of view, and I can verify that the present driveway that goes in from East Union Street does, I know where the boundary markers are, and it does cross the town land to have access into that property. The twenty-five feet that is shown on his plan is actually to the right of that driveway. Most of it is to the right of the driveway. And so the, from that point of view, eliminating any access in that particular area to the parcel as he's proposing would make the rail trail safer as people are exiting the trail and entering onto the shoulder of East Union Street. I, once again, I just urge the board to take action if as quickly as possible so that he can proceed into the planning stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other abutter that would like to speak? Yes. Would you please come forward and state your name?
My name is Kathy Ball, and I live at 29 Mill Street, and I'm an abutter. I would like to disclose that I am the town clerk, and I am not speaking from any perspective as my position as town clerk. This is my personal opinion as a resident and an abutter to the property. So any comments that I might make today or at any future meetings, I'd like that put on the record. I, I'd like to speak favorably about this project. I'm pleased that we have a project that's coming forward that I feel will be an asset to the community, and I'm not saying that every aspect is perfect and there isn't work to be put into this project to make it a perfect project. But I do appreciate the fact that Alan had the respect for the neighbors to come around and offer to meet with us personally and to sit down and show us the plans and to say, "What do you think of this? And I'd like your ideas, and I'd like your suggestions." And he also said that as this project goes forward, that he's going to look for people's ideas because people that have a comment to make, he's going to listen with open ears, and that might make his project better by the ideas that someone has to bring forward. So I think that that's very positive thinking. I think we're fortunate that we have a project manager that lives here in the community, and he's someone that he values what goes on in this community. He's served on many boards. He has invested interest in the town, and whatever the result of this project is, he has to live with the consequences or the benefits of it because he's going to listen to the comments of residents every day as he comes and goes about what they like and what they dislike about, about the project. And so as Alan sat with us on our porch and he looked over to the property, and we happened to have about five hundred and fifty feet of waterfront that looks over to that particular property, he sat there and told us about what he values about where he lives in this community, and he likes the solitude, and he likes the wildlife, and he appreciates that. And, and so the fact that he has values and he appreciates where he lives and why he lives there, I think that he can put himself in the place of those of us that are abutters about what kind of a neighbor this project would be to us, and I appreciate that. He assured us that there would be a lookout to keep the buffer of the existing trees along the edge of the river for the protection of the neighbors and the wildlife that's along there. And I think that any concerns that we have about that requirement or replacement of trees over the years can be addressed at future planning board meetings. That's, that's not for this particular board. But we liked hearing that, that that was his commitment to us as neighbors. We, he, we talked about the traffic and how would he address the traffic flow in the community. And a previous project had traffic access onto East Union Street, and that was the major route in and out, and that was a real concern to some of those folks in that neighborhood because, because the street is narrow and it has high-volume use with the bus company going in and out over there at all times during the weekdays and church traffic on the weekends. There is an access gate over there that's been used over the years for emergency purposes only. It's gated and it has a chain to it, and we've been told that the fire department has cutters onboard that if they need to have access, that they can cut the chain and get through for emergency access. So that may be a future discussion to support that there is a second way to get into this property for emergency use only versus as a, a traffic route. I think that one thing that's important to this community is that, does this project fit with the look that we're trying to maintain of the downtown area? And the Main Street program's worked hard to have a certain look to our community that is hometownish and New England, and it isn't the look of four-story buildings. I think that Alan has the right idea with this project, that when we stand on the Main Street Bridge, as you do for the pumpkin regatta that brings thousands of people to this community, and you look down at this project, you're going to see that there's an opportunity for this site to be cleaned up, for some of the historic look of the brick building to be preserved, and that we're not going to be looking at four-story buildings that are going to loom over the existing brick building, that you're going to see two-story buildings that are subtle throughout the background. I'm very impressed with what I've seen so far with the start of this project. I think that there are areas that you've addressed tonight that are concerns that will be addressed by this board and others. But as an abutter, my husband and I would like to speak favorably about this project, and we hope that you'll continue to work with Alan to try to bring this project to some sort of fruition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other abutters? Is there any interested parties? Yes?
Could I speak?
Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Gady Allen, and I live on 12 Joffrey Street, and I'm not an abutter, but I think the town should have projects like Mr. Eaton is presenting because I think it would be good for the town. Number one, it's not affiliated with Southern Hampshire Housing. It's not affiliated with government, which is a plus. It's really refreshing. These are the types of housing units that I think would be good for the town. It's going to bring in tax dollars, and it's going to, it's going to take away the eyesore, and I'm, I'm for this project, and I hope you will consider it also.
Thank you very much, Gady. I appreciate it. Is there any other interested party that is here? Yes. Good evening.
Hi, Cynthia Bovier. I'm chairman of Gulfstown Main Street Design Team. We were, we were at the technical review meeting this morning. We met with Alan afterwards, and the design team met tonight as well. So we've all reviewed it and seen it. We also are very happy about this site. We've always thought that this, the mill site was, you know, really needed something good need to happen there. The mixed-use residential and commercial and preserving the mill building is very, very important. And based on the tech review comments today and our meeting with Mr. Ye- Eaton and access questions, we, as a design team, we agree with the chairman that it's premature to be asking for these variances tonight. So we pretty much agree with what you said in that to grant the variances for the, for the parcels. It's not for the development. It's for a parcel. Once they get it, they're always going to have it. So we just, we, we feel, as you expressed, that we're in favor of the project, but premature was, was our word as well. So we, and we'd like, we'd like to come back and, and work with Mr. Eaton, but that's our, that was, as a team, that was our opinion.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments? Thank you. Are there any other interested parties that would like to speak? Okay, there being none, Mr. Eaton, how would you have anything further you'd like to comment?
Certainly. I always have something to say. One is, as you all know, as, as this board knows, timing is always important. I would ask that you at least take some action, not sure what. In terms of the design, obviously there are always design questions. I put out a, if you want to call it, a request and an invitation to all the design professionals in town. The architects and designers, and I have a meeting scheduled with them on Friday at Sawyer's to talk about a consortium kind of design competition to address not just what I think of the issues, but what a team would think of the issues in terms of the development on this site, what it might look like. So it's premature in terms of what I can describe as what the buildings physically look like other than the numbers and the density. Obviously, there are always questions that are asked and questions that need to be answered. I would like to bring this to a conclusion as soon as possible. As a design professional, I'd always ask that you act tonight, but that's the board's prerogative, and I will accept that. But for me to accept that, I need some direction from the board as to what you're physically looking for and what needs to be done, and what would be acceptable for those kinds of continuation, what kind of information, additional information that you would require to make a good decision relative to the requests made for this project by myself. I'd always thought that, that there would be enough explanation this evening, but I do understand that this is a very unusual project. It's not like one variance. It's not like one special exception. It's a whole system of things that I developed when looking at this project as to what any conceivable question that the planning board would have that would send me back to the zoning board again. I don't want to be back. I want to be here once, not twice, because we have, as, as a planning board, we sent things back to the zoning board. I know we did. Whether they liked it or not, it was sent back because they discovered that we didn't have all the nuances covered for the project at hand. Now granted, at the time the variances are, they're all information that is part of a planning process, which I personally, professionally, don't feel germane to the decision for a variance or a special exception. That's a professional opinion, okay? And you are all elected members of the board, and I appreciate your understanding, finesse, and judgment. So it's in your ballpark, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You put it here, and we thank you. Does anyone have any other questions to Ali? Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this application? There being none, I'm going to...
Not close yet.
I'm not going to close it, so.
If you're going to continue.
I'm going to talk to, I, I think you had said you would like to have an idea of, of what we're looking for from you, and, and as far as I'm concerned, on the special exception side, a traffic study would be good. We have no traffic study in front of us on this particular application. We don't have any idea about the traffic, what the traffic issue is, what needs to be ameliorated if any amelioration needs to come. I think that's a major. I think that's a major as far as issuing a special exception. Again, it does state that if, it will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians and a man that cannot be ameliorated. I feel in your, your, your own words, the lack of sidewalks on Factory Street, coming up Factory Street, is concerning because this development is going to be, hopefully, pedestrian-friendly, and you're going to be encouraging people to walk out of this particular development and shop down the Main Street, and I haven't, I haven't seen that, that presentation, nor have I, nor, I haven't seen the traffic, and I haven't seen the pedestrian hazard ameliorations. I haven't, again, I don't know if this is going to be conditionally approved by the planning board, and I know what you're saying, that it's not usual for the planning board to come before the zoning. I think in this, this is a, this is a unique instance. I have never suggested or thought of something like, of requesting this, but because many of the variance requests are pretty much conditioned as to whether or not this is going to be conditionally approved or not, that I would, I would prefer to wait to see what the planning board is going to speak about this particular application from their perspective, and then once we see exactly what they would like for conditional use improvement, then come back to us in December, and we will go variance by variance by variance and special exception once the conditional improvement has been approved. I'd like to check into more about the flood issue. I have, from my perspective, I have one saying yes, and I have one saying no, where that is a variance, part of a variance request. You stating that we should allow this to happen because there has been no flooding, and yet I do have somebody else who's saying that there was flooding, and I'm not sure if there was at this particular time. I wouldn't want to vote on that until I was sure as to what, what happened at that particular location with the flooding. And I'm looking at this not against the project. I'm looking at this for safety of the people that are going to inhabit here, the safety, safety issues that this town with its proximity to the river, with the, a twenty-six-foot right-of-way onto a major, the major, major artery, two, at least two cars per unit, traffic from a restaurant, traffic from a bakery, traffic from a mini brewery. It's concerning, and, and the traffic studies that have been done in the past would be specific to the quantity of people that were in that particular application and not specific to the quantity of the people in this application. And I don't know what that quantity of traffic is. I don't know what the projection is. So those, those are the type of things. In order to figure out whether or not we're going to vary the zoning ordinances or give special exceptions for this particular parcel, I don't really feel that I have enough substantial information to give my best judgment as to whether I am going to approve or deny a special exception or a particular variance. And that's my statement that I'm going to make, and in all fairness to it, I don't want to deny it. And in all fairness, I would like to continue it, and I would like to continue it until the next December meeting. And that's my statement, and I'd be glad to have anybody speak to that issue.
I have a question on this because I, I like the project, and I understand, I think I understand your reservations in voting on the entire thing tonight, but I'm also sensitive to time.
Right.
And being bounced back and forth. That can, that can hurt a project more than a denial, Ken, because you're, you're just, you're dragging it out, or not dragging it out for wrong reasons.
Right, I understand, yeah, right.
But I'm wondering two things. If there are parts of this that make sense to vote on tonight, could that happen? And could we also make the motion contingent upon planning board approvals? Because really, what we're saying on some of this is, we really want to wait until we know what planning's going to do. And if, and, and I'm also sensitive to granting a variance, and if it's not approved by planning, I, I completely understand that variances are run with the land. So if the project doesn't go forward, anybody coming after you or for another project in the future will get the benefit of that variance. So a conditional approval based on planning board seems to satisfy those, those concerns.
So for example, on the subdivision of the lot, if you were to put a condition of approval saying, you know, we'll give you a variance to have a lot that doesn't have the right amount of frontage, subject to, you know, a condition that... the right amount of frontage, subject to, you know, a condition that the planning board actually approves that subdivision through their process?
Exactly.
What I would say to you is, it gets cumbersome. And if he goes next Thursday for conditional use permit, then the next planning board meeting would be two weeks from then. And then, the next zoning board meeting would be two weeks from that.
I'm also looking at this, instead of all or nothing, instead of sending him to planning board without anything other than, we're going to wait. If there's items in here that make sense to give that conditional approval, I think, at least in my view, it gives planning board an idea of where we're going with it.
All right.
I agree.
It might help them, yeah, it may help them make a decision, or make it with more information than they'll have if we just say, we're going to wait.
And what would those particular ones be that you would think would be?
I mean, to jump out at me, I think the subdivision makes sense. I think, well, I think the special exception is the big one. And my problem with it initially was, if we grant the special exception, and for whatever reason, again, later on, something falls through, that's a big approval to give. But if it's given contingent upon this project approval on planning board, I think we're doing the right thing. I have to be honest, there's not a lot of them that I have a big problem with in terms of letting the planning board, you know, go through some of this and, like the traffic study, for example. I think they're going to be just as critical, if not more so. And I don't mean more, but I think they're going to be as concerned.
One of the key things about the traffic study, and ideally, I guess it would be nice if we had a study to look at, but one of the key words in the special exception is that it can't be ameliorated. And the planning board is the one that's better to determine what amelioration there would be.
However, what I would like to see, and like Kathy, I look at the various variances, and I think Mr. Eaton said it would be, or the things in the variances can be designed around, engineered around, you can find solutions to all of these. The special exception and the traffic are my big hangup. And I think Mr. Eaton mentioned in his presentation that, well, maybe I can get possession of the old Cumberland Farms building, which would give you enough property to do some adjustments. But I'd kind of like to see, what are the alternatives if that doesn't happen? Because I don't feel comfortable with the special exception. I don't see how you can go forward with something, yeah, 41 cars in an afternoon is one thing, but, you know, 54 units is the litany that Kathy went through with the number of cars per unit, et cetera, is going to generate a higher traffic count than that. And we have got to take the real world into consideration, also the fact that you've got a very busy restaurant with a very narrow ingress egress located directly across from the site. I would just like to see some suggestions or proposals for what could be done to ameliorate the traffic issue there, absent obtaining the Cumberland Farms building.
I have a, I was thinking about the traffic as well. That was one of my concerns. And then I got to remembering, I lived up Mass Road when I was a kid. And I was spending a lot of time down there when Cumberland Farms was active, and pronto pizza was across the street. I'm trying to tell myself that that wasn't a lot of traffic, but I mean, Cumberland Farms was always full of cars. I mean, they had like, I don't know, eight, nine parking spaces, if you count the side parking. And I'm just, I'm not, you know, I don't even know if a traffic study would be that effective in distinguishing the two time periods.
You do.
So I'm not sure if we're overthinking the traffic.
Well, it seems to me, as long-term resident of the area, there's also been with the increase in development in Ware and Dunbar, and there's been a significant increase in the volume of traffic on Mass Road over the last, say, 10 to 15 years, that, you know, I think has to be taken into consideration. Particularly with the blind, you know, the blind hill coming down from St. Lawrence, that's been an issue for a long time. So like I say, I don't know what the solution is, but I'd like to see some proposals for, you know, what you could do with Factory Street to ameliorate that if you're not able to acquire the building.
The third and fourth items on the list, the, it actually comes down to the second and third variance request, one for the sign and one for the subdivision. And I understand the conversation about the traffic study, but I'm, I feel, I just feel motivated to take some action to help move it along and not just send it without any, without any action if we can.
Yeah, I think that, I think our minutes and our words and our discussions and the tone that we're showing to all be favorable towards this development should be noticed by planning board and planning board members, and I'm sure people are watching. I think it's our due diligence, and it's our job to make sure that, because of the traffic that is going to be coming from this particular development, that we know and we have the figures of what's projected traffic to come out of there, how it's going to come out. And the traffic study needs to be specific to this application. So that when we go through the special exceptions, when we get to that part, that we have justified, that we have done our due diligence, we have required that information. And when it comes to large projects like this, Joe, traffic studies are more often than not required because of the amount of traffic that is going on to a major artery. I'd love to sit here and just take Mr. Eaton's word for it, that this is going to be done, and this is what he's going to do with Factory Street, and this is what's going to happen, and this is what's going to happen. I don't have anything here in front of me, any study or anything in front of me that says exactly what you're going to do. And I think it would be remiss of me to just say, well, I guess there won't be any hazard to pedestrians, and there wouldn't be any hazards to anything because Al said so. And yes, I firmly want to take his word for it. But it needs to be something that's shown to us. It needs to be black and white. And if I had something like that in front of me, I don't really see offhand right now any other of the four criteria that he doesn't meet. I don't, I don't, I'm going over it, but I'm just not going to let that go. It is, it's a major, it's a major issue with this.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
You said that usually, the traffic studies are required. Which committee should be requiring?
We do, because it's part of the special exception.
Okay.
It's part of the...
It just makes me wonder why one wasn't done in what's the application.
Well, they're expensive. Sometimes that is a reason. I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I would have, I don't know what to tell you with that. It is, in any large application to the zoning board for a special exception, when there's that, at least 100 vehicles involved in the application, that you then ask for that documentation.
So that follows, once we, once we, when we've seen the application, that's the zoning board's prerogative to request the study?
When there is that amount of traffic that's involved in this, in a situation such as this, yes.
Okay.
Just, can I clarify one thing, too? For the requirement for a traffic study, it's not necessarily a listed requirement on any kind of submittal checklist that someone would, you know, know that they have to submit that upfront. Obviously, it's up to the applicant to prove that they meet all the criteria. And if you feel that they need to supply something to be able to help you understand how that they are meeting that criteria, then you have the ability to request that they submit that. But it's a planning board requirement. When any application comes through, that's a listed requirement on their application. They have to submit a traffic study if they have certain number of vehicles, like what you were saying. There are thresholds for that requirement. But for your purposes, it's in order to help you know whether or not they are, you know, proving to you that they meet the criteria to ameliorate the traffic or the pedestrian scenario.
That's part of our, that's part of our charge.
Right.
15.3, 2.1, 3. Part of our charge.
Correct. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Now, as far as the sign goes, just to, I'm not quite sure. When you leave Factory Street and you go out onto Main Street, there is a brown house that sits to the...
Left?
Right.
You're coming out, it's on the left.
Coming out, it's on the left, going in, it's on the right. You're going in, it's on the right, going out, it's on the left. On the left. The brown house that's on the left. Is that residential?
The zone?
Yes.
No, it's village commercial.
It's occupied, if that's, I've seen people...
Okay, so that brown house is not a residential property anymore? It's zoned village commercial?
Well, it's used as residential, I believe, but it's zoned village commercial.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. So therefore, it is not considered part of a residential property within 250 feet of the sign?
No, the language in the zoning ordinance is pretty clear, that it's within a 250-foot distance to a residential one or residential two district boundary.
District, okay.
Right.
Do you know what the closest residential property is to that?
Uh...
Al, do you know what the closest residential property is?
Across the river, maybe?
Across the river, minimum of about 50, 60 feet. And there's none on the south side because of the rail trail. But there are three houses on East Union Street, they're back up to the rail trail, along with the church.
And they're beyond the 250 feet?
The rail trail is 60-foot wide. So it's not, how do you know, 250 feet? As a crow flies, it's 60 feet. Right-of-way is 60 feet wide.
All right.
That's why they're included as a butters on notification.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what, where that 250-foot parameter is from where you want the sign to go. And that's, that would be helpful.
For the full length of the...
To know what a residential...
1 inch equals 40 feet. Are you, which one are you scaling to? Are you, did you?
To the edge of the property line, for the kid on the plant, the Audi market right here, which is the edge of the...
Church property? Right.
From there to there. My infamous scale?
I'm using my infamous scale.
Yeah?
Which is actually a scale.
How close am I?
You're a little off. This is 1 to 40, right? 1 inch equals 40 feet?
Yes.
From the sign to the corner is about a little less than, about 190 feet. So actually, technically, you might need a variance there. Unless you're going to non-eliminate it. It's the Potential Properties Corporation Corner. Is that the right one?
Yes.
159 Amory Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea of what the sign's going to look like? And if so, could you bring a picture or something, or showing us what you're planning on putting there for a sign?
Unfortunately, the sign competition is preparing one. I do not have it. I was hoping to have it. Like everything else, he's working on something else for me also.
Because a couple of applications in the past for signs, we have asked them to be specific and show us what the sign would look like.
Okay. But here again, still got to go, I got to apply for a permit for the sign individually anyways.
But that's part of a variance.
That's reviewed by planning or staff?
Planning.
Reviewed by planning. So the content of the sign, letter size, and those are the details are all governed by the submission to the planning board for review and approval.
And where's the exact location that sign's going to go?
As you enter the property and get to the top of the rise going in over the rail trail, there's a property bound, there's a telephone, there's any telephone pole that sits almost on the corner of the rail trail. There's actually a marker there. It sits behind that pole. There's an existing pole there. There's also one on the other side of the rail trail, as you're coming up to it on the same side of the street. Has a street light on it. Which I presume you would be upgrading. No comment. I don't own the pole.
So with that...
How do we proceed?
I'd make a motion to continue until December 3rd. For additional, giving the applicant additional time to get additional information that we would, we have requested.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Do you want to be specific about the pieces of information you want him to supply?
Well, I think he knows the major one, which would be first to do with, we would like to see some traffic study, traffic report, traffic study, and ideas of amelioration, if necessary.
Can I make a comment, Madam Chair?
Yep.
If both prior proposals did not propose sidewalks on Factory Street, approved by the planning board.
Well, this is a different application, Mr. Eaton.
That is correct. And a different time.
And this is a different board. So, but I do appreciate that information.
Does the board want documentation on the flooding issue?
Yes.
I know he said he has a stack of stuff there.
Uh-huh.
He wants to submit that, he can.
Will be able to address the variance with the dwelling units after the planning board looks at it? The sign, we'd like to see something that would possibly give us an idea of the sign, what it might look like, even if it's in crayons. What it might look like, even if it's in crayons. I'm not going to ask you for anything, but I'm, I am concerned about on the subdivision of the two plots. I have to, I have to think through that from my aspect. How are you gonna have two owners and a manager? Something about that is a little vague with me. Right now, that's all that I can think of. Can anybody else think of anything else?
I'm a little bit concerned. I think for some of this, I think we're stepping into planning board territory.
Okay.
The sign, we were tasked with the size and illumination if it's within 250 feet. We're not necessarily tasked about what it looks like.
Okay.
That's the planning board's department, not ours.
But didn't we do that on Bell Airs to see, and the...
We asked for more information, but we didn't, we didn't, I mean, they're not even done yet. We did ask for more information on things, but we weren't trying to design the sign for them, or to, to tell them how to, what to make it look like.
I think what we did...
We were looking for, I think part of it was looking for the numbers on the lighting.
The candlelights.
Yeah.
I think on the Y, though, we, maybe they had brought them in on the Y. Maybe because they were here with the Y when they first came with the application. It was helpful in making us make the decision. It's helpful. Now, that's all I can say. It would be helpful, but it's, as Gail has said, I, it might not be, and it's not as necessary as the traffic.
I'll put please after it.
There you go.
For the illumination portion of it, if that's what he's wanting to do, he'll have to submit an extra application in between now and next meeting for the variance on the illumination, based on if that's only 190 feet to the residential zone. Not that it would be visible to those guys, but you got a lot to go through first, but...
Might as well draw our i's and cross our t's, all in the same time, and get it all done the right way.
And I would like to say, I don't see a big issue with the subdivision request, because frankly, Mr. Eaton has built himself a Gordian knot of things here, and how he untangles it, I don't think, I don't think is our purview. I just think the traffic is the one threshold issue, and the other variance issues are things that can be worked through either at this level or at the planning board. And I think, I don't think that our failure to take action, and I think the consensus of what I have heard from the rest of the board tonight is that everyone is very supportive of a project like this. I think any of us that have been down there and seen what the site looks like now would be a huge positive for the town. So we'd like to, you know, if we can get the traffic information and get action on it, get it moving. I will report back to this board on what conditions the planning board has to say about having the ZBA rule first. And we'll compare notes. Because I am afraid that's what I'm gonna hear.
Well, so be it. That's why we have ears.
I know.
So we can all listen.
Yes, I understand.
Yep. So, we have the motion on the floor to continue this until December 3rd pending additional information.
Is there a second?
And possibly an additional variance request if you are going for illumination.
That could come whether we approve this tonight or not. That could come later.
Okay. So we've got a second by Len?
A second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're not going to continue it? Okay. That being said, let's go through, let's go through all of the... What, what we're gonna do here, go through the special exception, granting a special exception. In order for this to be approved, it must have a special exception. The... In order for a special exception to be approved, it must meet all of the five criteria, and we will go through each of the criteria individually.
Do you have to close the hearing? If we're gonna, if we're not continuing?
Yeah.
You haven't closed it yet, so if we're gonna...
So since we will not be continuing it, we are now going to close the public hearing, and we are going to deliberate. So, once again, for a special exception to be granted, we need to approve all of the five conditions of the special exception. The first one, the specific site is an appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan. Is there any comment on that particular... Criteria?
Repeat it again?
The specific site is an appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan. I would agree with that statement that it is.
Can I just make a note that we want to be careful that it doesn't appear like we're voting on each criteria individually?
Okay. Fifteen point three point two point one point one. The specific site is an appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan. Does anyone have a problem with that? Fifteen three two one two, the site or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that. Fifteen three two one three, the use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated.
I will only say, as I've been saying all night, I don't feel I have enough evidence to make a full judgment on that, and I would prefer, I would prefer to see a traffic study first.
I think the planning board can ameliorate any of the concerns that come up, because they will be seeing a traffic study. That will be part of their application anyway. And I, what I said before, that cannot be ameliorated is a key term, and I think that the planning board can do that.
So there will be a traffic study done?
It's part of their application.
Okay, I think that's what I was trying to get at before, was will there be one done, required to complete the project?
At the planning board level, it is required. We can ask for it. It would not be a different one from what the planning board would get. But the planning board, it is required on, on their checklist. We don't have it on our checklist.
Okay.
For us, it's, it's a, it's optional.
Okay. With that information, I don't feel like we could, I don't feel like I would stop this because of that one.
Fifteen three two one four, the proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use.
I'd say it meets that criteria.
I agree. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties.
For this project, I agree. It does.
Demonstrated both in his presentation and in the butters' comments.
The burden of the persuasion is, the applicant bears the burden of presenting evidence that is sufficient to enable the ZBA to reach conclusions and make findings sufficient to support the approval of a special exception. No special exception shall be approved unless the applicant presents such evidence. In approving a special exception, the ZBA may impose such reasonable conditions, stipulations, and safeguards, including but not limited to the posting of a bond as it deemed necessary in property assure compliance with its rulings and to satisfy the requirements of this ordinance. In the case of approval conditions, a special exception shall be null and void unless all such conditions have been fulfilled within six months. That being said, we have now gone through the criteria for granting a special exception. I'll entertain a motion to, on the special exception.
I'll move to grant the special, special exception.
A second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? The motion carries three two. In the list of variances, a variance is needed from section four three of the Gosstown zoning ordinance table of dimension regulations to allow residential density of 16.8 dwelling units per acre, whereas only 15 dwelling units per acre are allowed for the parcel in the rear if developed for multifamily use only. This would allow for up to 54 dwelling units, whereas only 48 would be allowed on a 3.21 acre lot.
I think Alan's presentation was, was adequate to say that 54 units, where only 48 would be allowed, is reasonable, especially when he talked about the size of the units being smaller than what's typical.
Yeah, I mean, because you could say, well, he could go down to the 48, but make them huge, and then everything's crammed in there.
And you, in, in theory, you could have more people in those larger units. That could increase the impact.
Yeah, the way it's laid out, there's, they're not tight in there. I don't think that there's a risk in that.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to grant the variance.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been a motion to grant the variance, to allow for 54 dwelling units, where only 48 would be allowed on the 3.21 acre lot? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, there being none, the motion carries five zero zero. A variance is needed from section six seven five of the Gosstown zoning ordinance table of maximum sign dimensions, village commercial, to erect a proposed 40-square-foot freestanding sign on the property, whereas the maximum size allowed for freestanding signs is 24 square feet.
I think the configuration of this lot, of this property, and the plan that he's presented warrant the larger sign for visibility and legibility.
And also the fact that you're not placing the sign directly on Main Street, you're a significant distance back from the roadway, so there is a good argument for larger size there.
At the risk of going down a rat hole, I just want to bring up the lighting. We're not talking about the lighting. It's not in this request.
No, the illumination's not here.
Okay.
In cases like this, a 40-square-foot sign in the location where it's being proposed may very well look better and more in keeping with the surrounding than a smaller sign closer to the road.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the variance for this 40-square-foot freestanding sign, and it has been seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, there being none, the motion carries. A variance is needed from section four three of the Gosstown zoning ordinance table of dimensional requirements to allow the lot to be subdivided into two non-conforming lots. One parcel without any frontage on class five road, and one parcel with only 25 feet of frontage on a class five road, whereas a minimum of 50 feet of frontage is required on both lots.
I understand his explanation as to why he wants to subdivide into two parcels, especially for financing. I believe he said he had two banks and not, one didn't want...
Two owners.
One didn't want, well, he's still gonna be owning both. One's just gonna be an LLC, one's gonna be a homeowners association, but he will still be at the top of that pyramid. But for financing purposes especially is what I gathered from that. I would make a motion to approve. I would say that that, that financing question is possibly a result of the uniqueness of this property, and the way it has to be configured, and the way it has to be sold, I guess, to, to the people involved. That, that very well may be because of how unique it is.
You seconded already?
I was about, I was about to and didn't.
Sorry.
Would you like to second?
No, you get this one.
Second. I mean, I, if I might just add with that, I think that his, you know, getting into how he arranges his business is somewhat beyond our purview as a board, and, you know, I can understand particularly if it's a somewhat creative solution to it, and I don't see any problem with it.
Yeah, and I forget the, the interest party's name, but the woman that mentioned that this is a private enterprise that's going in on this, I think is a, is a good point. So any way that someone, private funds can get a project like this done is, is pretty awesome.
So there's a motion, a second on the floor? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed to it. The motion carries four one. A variance is needed from section 13 three four, 13 three five, 13 three four, and 13 three five two, oh, three three four, to build within outer 50 feet of the Wetland Service Water Conservation District, whereas these sections do not permit structures within a 100-foot buffer of defined surface waters. The variance also applies to section 14 seven three three of the Gosstown zoning ordinance due to proposed encroachment into the established setbacks.
Since there's already a structure within that setback, I don't have a problem with this plan.
And also, the new structures that are going up are below the dam, so, I mean, the water surface is even like lower than, you know, the upper part of the skid fund there. So I feel like that, that adds some benefit. You know, I think that this is probably to preserve any structures from water encroaching. I think it'd be better for water to encroach from, from that area.
What was brought up at the TRC meeting this morning was that in the previous application, there was a walkway along, they had requested that there be a walkway along the waterfront there. And I, and I'm just letting you know, because this was discussed today, and it was discussed at the prior application. And I think one of the major concerns was because a lot of people fish along that area, they have kids that go along that area, and they weren't quite sure if the deck or the building, not the one that's there now, because they get around it, but the, the one that's being, coming forward in this plan, would prohibit pedestrian traffic and people for going down there, just so you know. That was a concern that was raised this morning. That was a concern that was raised this morning.
Again, I, I sound like a broken record when I talk about how unique this land is, but I think, I think Alan made a convincing presentation that he has been, you know, as creative and practical as he can be with this development, and I don't think it's possible to, not, not everything is going to be exactly perfect, which is why, which is why there's this list of variances and a special exception.
And I would say to that, that it's possible that the planning board might say that they don't want the building there.
That's true.
That's true. I think if the planning board looks at it and finds a way where the building makes sense there, I, I don't want to stand in the way.
Well, then they could throw it back to us, but that's another.
And I just have two points. I think, I always, when I think about, like, walkways near bodies of water, I always think about the Flun Gorge. You know, they get, they get the walkways going right up in the mountain with the water and, you know.
That's beautiful.
Yeah.
I've never been there.
It's awesome. But, I mean, that's pretty close to the water, and, I don't know, I, I, I think that it will just sort of make it more accessible for people that aren't willing to go just down, down to, I don't know what you call it, just the shore of, of the banks.
Well, if you grant the variance, like I said, and then the planning board decides that they want to have a walkway there, they can just say they have to move the building or he has to move the deck or something of that sort, so that could be their issue.
Again, you're talking about the site review, not our purview.
I make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero, zero. A variance is needed from section 13, two of the Goss Town zoning ordinance to allow new construction of a paved parking area, outside access ramps, outdoor decks, and other structures to the existing mill building remaining.
There's a lot bundled in there.
That's a big variance, that might be one you want to hold off on.
This one, when I read all these things, these, to me, seem to be like, you know, everyone that spoke tonight is in favor of this, and all these things seem to be like the, the requirements to make sure that the community can enjoy the development.
I agree. I think it's tough to, to start picking things apart without it being a domino effect and it affecting, it, it may be having unintended consequences to other parts of the plan.
I think this really deals with, with planning board issues. Paved parking areas, access ramps, outdoor decks, structures.
Well, those structures are planning board issues in site plan review, but where they would go is in the flood hazard district, and that's what he needs the variance from. And if we grant the variance and they determine that it's inappropriate in that location, then they will tweak the application.
Can I just interject? Flood hazard district rule basically requires that no encroachments, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements, and other development are allowed within the floodway that would result in any increase in flood levels within the community during the base flood discharge. So, basically what that's saying is, structures that are going to take up mass area that might be covered by water in a, in the event of a flood would not be allowed in the flood zone. If he's going to propose decks that would allow for water to maybe flow under them or something like that, that may not even really need a variance from this section, from this flood hazard district. So, you know, if, if it's these types of structures, it's, it depends on the, the design, I guess, as to whether or not he would need it, but I would say any impact to the flood hazard district would probably be minimal with those, those types of structures.
And you're talking about all of this basically being ancillary to proper redevelopment of those buildings. So, I, I'll make, I'll make a motion if it's in order to approve.
I'll second.
You, you have a second one all night, or have you?
I've made some.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so now you have a second one.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain on that one. I am. So, the vote is four, zero, one. The motion carries. So, you're off to the planning board, Mr. Ayton.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
I would hope that every member of this board, if a question comes forth and presents it, because your presentation and your questions are just as important as anybody else's in this town. And I would appreciate them all. And I know all of you anyway, so, I, I know you will. Thank you.
Alan, I really appreciate your openness to input from other people, because we don't see that a lot in, in a lot of applicants. You know, to get what we might deem as best, sometimes it's a little bit of iron twisting, but I really appreciate your openness to input from the board and from the abutters especially, because they need to feel a part of it, and they don't want to feel that their, their property or their lifestyle is going to be jeopardized.
Well, to be honest with you, I think one of the problems with this site has always been people were afraid to look at the issues. It's a unique piece. Won't find another one like it in town. And so, many people are scared or can't visualize or have a vision of something that would be good, and to, can visualize how to solve problems. That's what I do. That's, and, that's my unique talent. I appreciate all your effort this evening, and, like I said before, I want you to be my first customers in a restaurant, too, and I promise I won't poison you.
What kind of restaurant?
If I may, I'll only offer the observation that in my time on this board and observing many of the other town boards, this may be the first time I have seen a butter's in unanimous support of a proposal of this magnitude, so.
It was a nice campaign.
It achieved something unique there.
Yeah, they certainly weren't in previous applications for the same lot.
Is Ms. Bennet gone? I spent two hours with her last night after the cyclamas being in the hallway out here, and trying to make sure she, she understood the issues. She said she'd be here tonight, but I didn't know what she was going to say. Last night, I don't think she would have, was positive when she left, and I gave her a bunch of stuff to take home and read about the future and whatever, and I think maybe I get home a little bit. But I also told her that if she has any questions, I expect to see her at any board or presentation and ask those questions.
And she will.
She's not a problem with me. Thank you.
I have nothing more. We have, we need to discuss correspondence. We have a request for rehearing.
Oh, yes.
Yes, you did. I am sorry.
The Harvey Dupree Family Trust is requesting a rehearing on the variance, to deny to build a home on the Danus Park Grove, map six, lot 36-1-1. We have received, we received information, our package regarding that. We have received information from an attorney, we're just discussing, discussing this. We received information, this is the parcel that we denied because of the wetlands and the amount of wetlands and the amount of wetness that is on that particular parcel. We received a letter from the applicant's attorney requesting that we rehear it. I read over the request myself. I think there are some valid issues. I think clarification, it would give us an opportunity to reclarify and reexamine some of the issues that we jurisdictions on, opinionated on. So, I would be, I would encourage the members of the board to approve a rehearing on this variance.
I'll make that motion. When, after that decision was made, I kind of had some, I don't want to say regrets, because there are some serious concerns with the wetness on the land, but I had concerns about denying use of the property, because it didn't really seem like there would have been much else to do, and especially given the circumstances with which it came before us for that last hearing, with just the potential purchaser of the property, not the applicant, and the applicant has, or the property owner seems to have more information. I think a motion for, or granting the rehearing request is in order, so I will make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
And do you, you both understand what we're, what we're stating here? And you understand, Al, what we're stating here?
I do understand, but I'm not voting.
No, but, but you do have, what we, on the zoning board, we, just to bring this up as an issue, on the zoning board, whether you, whether you vote or not, you're part of the discussion.
Okay.
And we encourage total discussion by all members.
Okay.
The more, the more information we get, the more options we have to decide.
Correct.
But then again, when it comes time for vote, you, you are not voting on this one, so. I just wanted to clarify that for you. All right, so we have a motion to rehear the application. It has been seconded?
Yes.
Okay, all the, is there any more discussion on this?
Do you want to rehear it on the third of December?
Yeah, the motion, motion to rehear it on December 3rd, our next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries five, zero, zero. We will rehear the application on December 3rd.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thanks for waiting.
I'd like you to have taken that one up in the beginning of the meeting. I forgot about that.
Yeah.
You know, Kathy, I don't wear a watch for that reason.
I don't really want that. Okay, we got the continuance, there was another letter from Belair. We got comments from the attorney. Hebert Property, I don't think there's anything else. The next meeting's December 3rd. There's Town and Country, if anybody's interested.
Does anybody want to report on their visit to the Law Lecture Series?
Phenomenal.
They were very good. Perfect timing for Kathy, as far as I was concerned.
I actually would have been, I would have felt much less prepared if I hadn't gone, and I went to the, I had a conflict on the third one, but I went to the first two, and it was just phenomenal. I would highly recommend it. I thought it was just exactly what, what you need, you know, to, to understand what's going on and make good decisions, because you've really got to get up to speed pretty fast.
Yeah.
And this, this was great.
The second, the second one was, to me, the best one. The second one went on the law, they went over the laws, the municipal laws and the law lectures, and they brought us up to snuff with the new laws that have been passed. And I gleaned a lot of information out of it this time. I really did. Attorney Sandow, where does that, I don't know.
Wait a minute.
It was one of the attorneys from the law.
And that's a good point, because things change. You know, what, what you might have heard, you know, a year or two ago, it's, it can change, and there can be a whole new interpretation of it.
No, it was Attorney Daniel Kreen.
Yeah, and then another one.
And the other one might have been, if he has a separate.
But they were excellent. They were, they were very excellent.
I thought so, too.
The first, Kreen did more on the planning board side.
Sanders?
Sanders, Sanderson, Paul Sanderson, I think it is.
Yeah, that name sounds familiar.
And he was the one that was more on the zoning board side. So, they split the evening in half, and the three of us.
Do you want these to make copies? These were the two presentations that I went, the first two, so.
But they're well worth, they're, I mean, what is it? Seventy-five dollars for the series, twenty-five dollars for the night, and you listen to two, two very, very well, very knowledgeable attorneys.
They're supposed to be online as well.
It's, it's great.
I was spending my time doing this.
No, because they're online.
I would have cut my teeth for it.
Now you can take a break.
No, there's no, no rest, no rest for the wicked, because.
If they had included a break and snacks, it would have been perfect.
While, while we're here.
No breaks?
No.
They just keep going.
Yeah, they just, they just blow right through it.
Bring your own, bring your own water, bring your own snacks, that's it.
Yeah.
We saw people eating while they were there. We had touched upon the subject about if we were to have a lot of applications one evening, that we were considering coming up with some type of a plan on how we would handle that, so we don't go into the midnight hours and, and have to stay here till 1:30 or 2:00. In thinking about that, I was, I was kind of thinking, I don't know if we could do something that, that wouldn't be so formal, but if we knew that we had an agenda that was going to be lengthy, that maybe at the beginning of the meeting, we make the announcement that we are going to allow X amount of minutes per application.
That, that's true.
We had talked about, what, what suggestions?
You know, I'm kind of going back and forth. I, I agree with it in theory. I just am careful about making sure who's ever here, because if, if it's not a full agenda, you basically have free rein. You, you've got, you've got more than enough time, and, and I kind of feel funny saying to one applicant one night, keep going until you're done, and then another applicant, you have 45 minutes. I don't know, that doesn't.
But they, the application would be continued.
Yeah.
Because.
Oh, okay.
The, the planning board does that. They limit their meetings to 11 o'clock, because even after 10 o'clock, you get to be tired.
I think that's fine, yeah.
And kind of like zombies, and can't really make sound judgments sometime.
I agree, and, and I think it's got a dual purpose. I think first, it does let, like you said, you know, you, you don't want people here at 1:00 in the morning, because then you're just maybe rushing through it, but at the same time, knowing that you're going to cut off at a certain time at night, it's going to make me a little more efficient. I'm not going to be dawdling.
You're going to be to the point, yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think Alan is a former member of the board, can probably speak to how well the 11 o'clock. We never went to 11 o'clock when I was on the board, once, not even once. Now, that all comes about with management by the chair. Secondly, in most towns, there comes a variances. I would get a notification saying the agenda's full, we'll see you next month, or see you at the second meeting of the month, and that's made, that decision is made by staff.
Well, we, we're, what's different from the zoning board and the planning board, which you must realize, is that we meet once a month.
Yeah.
We don't meet twice a month, and that, what was another difference that you said?
Yeah, I think putting off zoning is a bigger deal.
But it is a bigger deal, but.
A lot of times, we, like, we've had 12 applications, they, we have to, once we receive the application.
We've never had 12.
Well.
I think the most we've seen in the past year is, is seven or eight.
But you don't know how fast certain, you might think a case is going to run long, and it might be efficient.
Like, tonight, we had five, five items on the agenda, and we really only talked about three.
Three.
Is that right?
Yeah, three.
Yeah, so, that can kind of, the dynamic of that can change so much.
It's deceiving.
It is, but it's, your best bet is to continue meeting to a time certain.
Right.
And generally speaking, having served on a number of boards. And generally speaking, having served on a number of boards, the quicker the better. So the planning, this planning, the planning board in this town did a favor for me last summer. Because I came to the board in July with Sully's and they actually scheduled a meeting on their time off in August. To hear, only to find out we had other items on the agenda that came in that also needed to be taken care of. So I don't, don't feel bad that you won't have enough for the next meeting because you can take them as fast as you can get them. There's no, there's no.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, in, all I'm saying is that we have discussed the fact that we've stayed here late. And it has bothered a lot of the members on this board that we have, we've been after midnight and one o'clock. And, you know, if people are here and are gonna speak, that you, you, you have to allow public to speak.
That's correct.
And you have to allow people to make their presentations. And short of that, you know, what, what can you do? So my suggestion, again, would be such that if we feel that we may have a lengthy meeting, we could, could perhaps at the beginning of the meeting, apprise everybody that tonight, we're going to allow X amount of minutes based upon how many applications we have for the presentation and for whatever else. And then if we don't get through it, then we will be continuing it on to the next stated date of continuance.
I've suggested this multiple times in the past about limiting the amount of time that abutters are allowed to speak.
Never. You could never do that. That, that, that would be totally.
You can do that, in places, lots of places do it.
The only, only if the subject matter presented becomes.
Repetitious.
Repetitious.
Absolutely.
And I think that's the chair's call.
That's right. And that's when you start, when you start to see them coming up and back and forth, you say, no, it has to be all, something new or don't, don't come before.
That's the best control you have, probably the only control you have.
But you can also limit the amount of time that one person speaks. It's not, it's not just, you know, I mean, because one person could get up and speak for forty-five minutes on an application and that's longer than the presentation that the, that the presenter gave.
I think we do that well. I think we do do that well.
I have one other question. And I was at a hearing in Wyndham and what they said, they had a big agenda, so they, they switched the order around, first of all. Just so that, because they had one big case and they had five small ones. So they wanted all the small ones to go first, which, that, that was just a judgment call. It's fair to some, not fair to others. But they also said if we, if we don't have enough and we have to hear it at a later date, they were gonna hear it the following week instead of the following month. So, so there's kind of that middle ground. Is that possible to say?
We can set up special meetings. You know, it's obviously a difficult thing to do sometimes with the amount of scheduling that everybody has to go through to, you know, make time for a, a special meeting like that.
But it seems to bridge that gap, making people wait a month is sometimes.
Yeah, it's, it's a solution.
I guess if, if it's, and, and can you decide at that time? Can we say, look, is everybody available next week to come back?
Or enough people, anyway.
We've done a few special meetings in the past.
So you could decide it right then. And if you've got enough people who commit to coming, maybe, maybe that's a good middle ground.
And with four alternates, there's a good chance that you could reach out to them and, and get someone in.
So the next time that we have what we consider to be a possibly lengthy agenda, then before we get involved in it, let's, after we approve the minutes, let's have a discussion on how we're going to, and we'll limit our discussion.
Yeah.
Ten minutes and figure out what we're gonna do.
The chair rules the roost.
Yeah.
You're the leader.
I know, but I, you know, Al, I understand that, but I'm also, I also like input and I'm a team player with my board.
That, that's, that's correct.
You do your board your way.
I understand.
Okay.
But you, you as the chair can lead, and that is, we've got several, what I can perceive to be small cases, I'm gonna change the order and we're gonna hear those first.
We've done that before. We have done that before.
And I, and I think that shows the audience that you want to move things along.
Have you watched me in the past year? Have you seen how I've, how I have chaired a, a, a meeting?
How long have we known each other?
Too long.
A long time, Kathy. We don't want to know. A long time. But the point is, you do a good job. But it's all about leadership and making decisions, and it's all your fault. That's why you're elected to that position.
I know.
Did you say it's all your fault?
Yes.
Because I took it.
All right.
I want to, I want to step back for a minute, just to something that Brian had said about limiting what the abutters say. And I understand the thought of letting a butter speak. They really need to feel like they've had the opportunity to speak. But I think Brian's right that you can limit because sometimes they tend to get off track. And just encourage and guide them down the trail of talking about the criteria that need to be addressed and rather than rambling on. And so we can, we can do that to help as well.
Yeah, because Madam Chair, you'll probably have to tell me to be quiet some night.
I can't wait for it.
Let me take the first opportunity. No, no. I think we do this. And, and I, I think that, I mean, I know we do this because I have a little bird that sits in my ear over here and says, criteria, criteria, criteria. And we have had it when the two women were down on the river and they wanted to do some development and, and finally, I just said, you've got to get back on track and, you know, let's, let's cut to the chase. Because we will be here until two o'clock in the morning if we don't. But you, it, and to me, it's a, it's a, it's a judgment call because I do not want to inhibit somebody from coming forward because it, it is, to a lot of people, it's not easy to stand, to walk forward and sit in those chairs and talk to a board. It's very intimidating.
I saw the old couple tonight.
They were cute.
But I think just you're saying welcome to people and you're, and you're, you're.
That's fine.
You're.
I think they were cute. Excuse me.
I think you do a good job of making people feel comfortable. The first thing you say is welcome, welcome, you know, to, to the meeting. That's unexpected. That's, I mean, I don't, when I present at different boards, I don't ever hear welcome very often. It's just nice. I think, I think you do a good job of making it easy.
I like when they get going into an argument. One says one thing and the one, and then another one comes up and then the other one starts, and they're back and forth and back and forth. And that's the stuff that.
And I've seen you cut that off.
We cut, we cut it off.
Yeah.
We cut it off, and we have.
And that's the stuff that I think very often with these discussions, we get away from the facts of the case and get into the, pardon my friends, the neighborhood pissing mats, which we don't want to be in the middle of, so.
Well, it says it in the rules and procedures that if somebody has a question, they're supposed to address it through the chair.
That's right.
And they don't speak directly to another person in the audience, so.
All your future chair people understand. It's a one-on-one.
Yeah, it, it is. It's fun. That's the whole, that's why you have to look at it.
And it, you know what? It's, it's one well-paid job, I have to say. We, I'll tell, this is one well-paid job. I don't, I don't know who else.
It's a lifetime salary too, right?
It is, yeah, with benefits and everything, so.
So do we really, do we have a consensus of, what, an eleven o'clock cutoff or?
I wouldn't want to go later than eleven.
I mean, that's the thing. For those of us who are up at five-thirty AM.
And we're not there yet.
Approaching eleven.
I think five-fifteen comes early for me, you know?
Or you're up a half hour earlier than I.
We can start with an eleven o'clock, and if that doesn't work, then we'll go, go to nine.
Is there nothing in the rules and procedures that talks about the time of the meeting?
No.
I know the planning board has that.
Yeah, they do.
Yes, they do.
If you want to do that, I would suggest we do it as a formal amendment to the rules and procedures, that there not be, you know, that the meeting time not go longer without a vote from everybody saying, yeah, we're okay with continuing.
And that's another point that Gail had made, was that even though you put that end time at eleven, as Brian just mentioned, we put it aboard at quarter of eleven. If we know we're gonna be maybe quarter after eleven to make a decision, but we're that close, we could go fif, we can make a decision to hold it minutes longer.
So can we make that motion now? We don't need a formal anything. I mean, except for, we're here, we can do it now, right?
Well, are you saying you want to amend the rules and procedures?
I am.
To add that piece?
Yes, I am. I've been saying that for a couple of years.
And I know that, I know that Vivian has spoken to me about it. Joanne has spoken to me about it. They are proponents of, of limiting the, the hour.
As long as you state it clearly enough so that when I read the minutes, I can make the amendment to the, to the official rules and procedures document. I'm good with that.
Meeting time not go.
I make a motion that.
I just, that the meeting time not go longer than eleven PM without a vote from the board. Good enough?
That any, any zoning board of adjustment meetings, because if we had that extra meeting, it couldn't be just the monthly meeting, it would be, it would also include the extra meeting. Let's see one thing.
Didn't, all right. To amend the rules of procedure to include that a meeting of this EBA not go longer than eleven PM without a vote from the board.
I second. I really second. That's what I don't, this I feel okay. As a chairman, I don't like to second.
Who's voting?
So, so are you seconding this?
I seconded it.
Okay, you did, okay.
Who's the, who's the voting alternates?
I'll sit here quietly.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll stay with the five. We're just gonna say, you were, you were in the books, so we'll stay with the five. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, there being none. The motion carries. In the future, our meetings probably will not go past eleven.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I raise one last question on that same score. As far as the number of alternates we have now, do we have any of the, there was another alternate that was signed up, or has he since resigned, who hasn't shown up and?
No, he showed up. Dan Doucette?
Yeah. Has he resigned or is he still listed as an alternate?
He's still, he's still an alternate. He's still, he has issues. Conflicting work issues that he is trying to work through. When I spoke to him, I think it was three meetings ago when he was here. I don't know if he was here for that meeting. Maybe you didn't see him.
The only one I missed is I believe I told you, which I knew in advance, I wouldn't be. And I'm just, it, it's kind of, I think as a board, we need to address it at some point because you'd have another alternate that someone could sign up for.
Well, we have one position still open. We have one position still open and do you want to?
Be your term.
Do you want to see if we want Brian to speak to him about whether he feels he really can fulfill it and maybe ask him?
That would be, that would be my feeling.
Kinder, gentler approach.
Well, what if we were to wait until our next position is filled?
Yeah, I think that's the right way to know.
Because now he's not taking up a space really because we've got another open one, right?
If we're full, then, then yeah, find out if everyone's still gonna be active.
As I say, maybe just me, but when I was an alternate, I showed up.
His term is.
It was just you.
Yeah. Some days it was just me who showed up.
What's his term, Brian?
His term is up in twenty-fourteen, March of twenty-fourteen, so.
This coming March?
Right, so it might be more appropriate at that point when, when his term is up to ask him the question, you feel like you still want to continue? Or, you know, because it's only a few months away.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I, I, and I do, I do agree with the preclusion that if we do fill the fifth alternate spot and he still is absent continuously, that maybe at that point, we would take the kind of gentle approach and see if Brian could maybe just give him a call and see what was up. But until that time, we'll just keep him on there until A, the position is filled, or B, the March elections come up.
People's lives change, you know?
I, I, I have an inner feeling about this because I, having spoken to him personally about his issues, that he very much looks forward to trying to get here. And I guess with that little bit of want, you know, really wanting to be able to come here, then until the fifth one was filled, I'd still like that to be available to him if possible, but I understand Len's position, you know, it can't go on forever.
Right now, I'll second the motion to adjourn.
I put you to it.
All those in favor say aye. Good night. We'll see you December third.